Good afternoon, welcome to our continuation of our city council meeting for Tuesday, June 27. First, we're gonna do a roll call.
Present.
Capman Gomez.
Present.
Dutra.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Hurst.
Here.
Rios.
Here. We're gonna take this item in consent agenda, which is special city council meeting. This is for public input on any consent agenda item. This is a resolution ratifying memorandum of understanding with the mid-management unit fiscal year 2017-2019. Okay, so we're gonna include this. What do you need from this, Mr. City Manager?
Anybody who'd like to speak at that item?
Okay, any member of the audience that would like to address us on this item? Any questions on the council on this issue?
Do an overview? Is this, which one is this one?
This is mid-management.
Mid-management, okay. We've already, okay.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna go for it, okay? Okay, we're gonna go then to our regular meeting.
I think we need a vote on this.
We got the vote, I think.
Okay, so we need a vote.
I'll move the staff recommendation to resolution.
Okay, motion and second, and questions. Roll call.
Bielisich?
Yes.
Capman Gomez?
Yes.
Dutra?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hurst?
Yes.
Rios?
Yes. I would like to ask Mr. Hernandez if he can lead us into the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
The flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'd like to also suggest if somebody needs interpretation, there is some headsets. Si alguien necesita interpretación, ahí hay los audífonos, tenemos nuestra intérprete para que pueda hablar en su lenguaje más confortable. So please, if you need headsets, please move, and you can speak in any language that you feel comfortable. This is a time for oral communications from members of the public in the city. We're gonna start with the public. You can address us, tell us where you live. I hope you fill out a form, and you have, you have a time clock to tell you how much time you have. So please come forward.
Brad Blatchley with the Parks and Community Services Department. Downtown is the place to be this summer, so I just wanted to plug three events that are happening. First is the Fourth of July Parade that will be a week from today, begins at 1:00 p.m. Paz Padilla is the grand marshal, and if I got my facts correct, this is the longest-running special event in the city. I think it even predates the incorporation of the city. Second event, we had our Music in the Plaza, First Annual Music in the Plaza event last Thursday. It went well. We, everybody enjoyed themselves. Our next event will be on July 13th, and it will be a tribute to Santana by the Chicano All-Stars. And so we have five more events on the second and fourth Thursdays in July, August, and then going into September. And then finally, Neighborhood Services Division is hosting a free movie night at the City Plaza this Friday. They're showing the movie Sing. Popcorn and refreshments will be available, and it's free for the public to come on out. Starts at about 8:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Good evening, Council. Tamara Vides. I'm here to share with you two short videos. I wanna share with you the two videos, the two commercials that we have airing out in local television promoting our Fire in the Sky event. So I wanna take a moment of your time. It's 30 seconds each video, one in English, one in Spanish. You might have seen it now, but I would like the community to also be aware that this event is happening on 4th of July.
Watsonville traffic, we're inbound runway 2-0, leaving.
Kids, let's go! Quick!
Fire in the Sky, the Watsonville Municipal Airport Open House, July 4th. You're invited to this free community aviation celebration featuring the largest fireworks display on the central coast. Get all the details at watsonvilleairport.com.
Watsonville traffic, we're inbound runway 2-0, leaving.
Vamos, niños! It's there!
Fire in the Sky, una exhibición gratuita en el aeropuerto principal de Watsonville, 4 de julio. Están invitados a esta celebración comunitaria de la aviación con el show de fuegos artificiales más grandes de la costa central. Para más detalles visite watsonvilleairport.com.
Just wanted to make sure that everyone in the community knows that this 4th of July at 5:00 p.m., the airport will open its doors to host a great community event. It's a festival-like event. We'll have food trucks available. We will have a movie for the kids on the ramp there at the airport. We have worked together with all city departments, police, fire parks, airport, and city manager staff to bring this together to our community, and we are looking forward to offering a safe alternative for fireworks on the 4th of July. So just want to share that with you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the council. My name is Joe Zora, and my wife and I own the property, One Melwood Court, which is the property that corners the highway, Main Street and Green Valley Road. We moved that about three years ago, and as you can see, the pictures of the ramp, our property runs down to Main Street, to, on one side, and to Green Valley on the other side. I, when we moved, there was nothing, not ramp, but wild weeds. Weeds grew so much the first year that if I walked, I'm a short person, but if I walked the, between the weeds, you couldn't see me. It was, so we got somebody to cut them down for us. And, and since then, we got the weeds under control. As you can see now, we have flowers, and even got the golfers under control on that thing. Well, the reason I'm here is I've been told that that's the busiest intersection on the city. Thousands and thousands of people cross that intersection every day, going in and out of Watsonville, going to school, going shopping, whatever. And so, as you can see, these, the other three corners are well-maintained. The landscaping, as you can see that one there, and another one, except that one on the outside is a sore eye. The weeds grow every year to three, four, five feet high, and it's not until I call every year for somebody goes up there and it chops it down. When it chopped it down, of course, they are so tall, all these, the grass is laying on the floor, on the ground. My, you can see the weeds before they, they was chopped, and they went and cut part of it, and then I called and I talked to someone named Enrique. He said, "I'll, I'll go up there and check it out to see how far that they went." A few days later, somebody went out there with a big machine and chopped it all down. Well, what I propose, I'd like to keep it the way it is right now, all year round. And I know that's just the minimum, because the way it looks right now, that's it right there. Maybe later on, some permanent landscaping could be done on that corner, some whatever would be appropriate. But for now, at least I know I could keep the weeds down all year round. Of course, I'll supply the labor, but I'm asking the city to provide me with a weed killer. That's, it's expensive, and whatever weed killer would be recommended, if the city could supply me with a weed killer, at least the part that borders my property or our property, I would supply the labor and keep that corner down until-
You can finish. You can finish.
Oh, yeah, until the time that there is a permanent solution to that corner. I mean, all three other corners are beautiful, and that's a sore eye. Okay, thank you very much. And if, maybe, but if you're good to do, I'd like to have that in, on writing, so because a couple of years from now, someone say, "Oh, I never heard about that." So-
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, could I say a few words about that?
Go ahead.
I think the area he's referring to is Caltrans right away, and the area that, that he was mentioning Enriquez is the area where that post was on that one picture where it was cleaned up in the back, but I think-
I think, no, I think that it's the city, that Caltrans is to the left of it. So maybe Steve can clarify exactly. Part of it is the city.
No, the other Steve.
Okay. Oh, so he'll talk to him in the back. Thank you. So-
Okay, next.
Joe, he's gonna-
Can you lower that podium? Thank you.
My name is Nancy Torres.
Hi, Nancy. Just take a breather, okay? You okay?
Because seven times, they've returned me over with my son. Going right here by the court, and over there by the mail. I'm tired. If you could please do something about that, my neighborhood is not safe. I live in 128th Street. The, the streets are cricket. I can't even take my son to the bus stop, because it's really hard. My son needs to be in the bus to go to school, and he's my only son. And I'm the only person that takes him. If you could please help my city to fix my street. There's bumps. Oscar, I already said Oscar, pictures. There's a lot of bumps and a lot of sidewalks cricket, and it's hard for me to go. My technician said that he's not gonna fix my wheels. He's tired. And I need, if the city could help me to fix the street. Please.
Anymore? Anything else? Thank you very much, Nancy. We're gonna be, we're gonna be addressing that item later on in the agenda, and we will be, be in contact with you, okay? Thank you so much, Nancy. Okay? Someone else?
Must be me. Mayor, city council, city staff, members of the public. My name is Pablo Bredo, Fire Chief, and I just wanted to make a quick announcement and give credit to the American Red Cross. Over the last few days, they've been doing some installs in the Bay Village area, installing smoke alarms, but I wanted to pay special attention to Wells Fargo Bank, who gave the American Red Cross this Saturday a check for $10,000 to help install smoke detectors in Santa Cruz and Monterey County. I wanted to introduce Division Chief Rudy Lopez and also our Fire Marshal.
Good evening. I just wanted to add that the efforts the Red Cross and their volunteers resulted in the installation of 220 smoke detectors in 102 homes. They need to be applauded for that. It's a great effort. I'm sure the Bay Village residents appreciate it. We, as a Watsonville Fire Department, very much appreciate their efforts as well. The, in the smoke alarm, excuse me, not detector, smoke alarms that were installed have a 10-year life battery, so they're assured that the batteries will last at least that long, and again, really appreciate the efforts of the American Red Cross and the volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I know how important those alarms are, you know, because I didn't know that my house was still working on it, and the other day, a lot of steam came out of the bath, and those things went out, and they were loud, very loud. So it's important that everybody gets that. So thank you for, to Wells Fargo. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Tom Sims. I'm the Assistant Chief of Police. You've probably read about him in our city newsletter. You may have even seen him highlighted in our department's Facebook page. And if you have seen his picture on our department's Facebook page, you probably saw a lot of the positive comments that he received. But tonight, I want to introduce to you in person our new downtown officer. Standing there in the back is Officer Juan Ribiesca. Juan has been with the Watsonville PD for almost three years and is assigned to our newly-created Special Investigations Unit. His duties as a new downtown officer is to work with the business owners, developing crime prevention plans, getting to know the downtown community, and really being a liaison with the downtown community. This is a very important position for our city, and I think you all recognize that, and I would like to thank the city manager for his tremendous amount of support in getting us this position. Thank you. And while I have them here, I'd also like to introduce you to the other members of our Special Investigations Unit. They're supervised by Sergeant Juan Trujillo. Go ahead, stand up, boys. We have Officer Fernando Lopez, Officer Aaron Chavaria, and Officer Saul Valades. Along with being very proactive in dealing with crime issues, they're also willing to take time and engage in our community, which is very important. Oh, just recently, they were caught taking some time out of the day to play a little soccer with some of the local kids. That's some serious skills there. The city is very fortunate to have these officers working here, but I would just say this, they are just an example of what all the men and women at the Watsonville Police Department do on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
And since I don't see anybody else in line here, I'm gonna take my second opportunity to talk about another topic, if that's all right, Mayor, council members. A couple of years ago, members of the Watsonville Police Department began to raise funds for a, for our local Jacob's Heart Children's Cancer Support Services. The mission of this organization is to provide support to parents and families of children with cancer and other life-threatening illnesses in Monterey, Santa Cruz, San Benito, and the south part of Santa Clara Counties. This will be the department's third annual fundraising program and will run from July 1st through September 30th. Last year, the Watsonville Police Department raised $2,300, and all proceeds, proceeds were donated to the organization. You're probably wondering why I'm telling you this. I'm telling you this because any officer who donates to the fundraiser is allowed to grow a beard as a show of support. So hopefully, you'll be seeing many of our officers driving around over the next few months sporting a beard. And if anybody up here or out in the audience is interested in donating for this great cause, you don't have to grow a beard, but there will be a link on the PD's internet site to guide you through the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
En nombre de la comunidad salvadoreña saludamos al consejo municipal de la bella ciudad de Watsonville. A nuestro alcalde Oscar Rios por su gran trabajo con la comunidad y poner en alto al Salvador. También queremos agradecer en nombre de la comunidad a las autoridades y concejales que en el 2013 recibieron a nuestro vicepresidente, que ahora es nuestro presidente del Salvador, Salvador Sánchez Seren. Y también en esa visita vino Carlos Ramos, el alcalde del municipio de San Pedro Masahual. Creemos en hermandad y amistad entre los pueblos, y ese fue el comienzo de una buena amistad entre Watsonville y El Salvador. La hermandad en estos cien pueblos es de gran importancia, ya que con esta amistad se abren caminos hacia intercambios culturales, educativos, artísticos y musicales, experiencias de administración y programas sociales. La comunidad salvadoreña les hace una cordial invitación para que visiten a San Pedro Masahual en noviembre de este año. Conozcan El Salvador y sean ustedes testigos propios de los cambios y programas que el gobierno del Salvador está impulsando en favor de los más necesitados y con muchas limitaciones. Gracias en nombre de la comunidad salvadoreña de Watsonville y Santa Cruz y del pueblo salvadoreño. Gracias.
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 In the name of the Salvadorian community, we would like, thank you for, Oscar Rios, for the great work he's done. We also like to- We also like to thank, in name of our community, with the council in 1913, I mean, sorry, 13, 2013, our president of El Salvador. And this visit also, Carlos Ramos also visited, who is the mayor of Alcalde. And it is very important to have brotherhood among towns. And this is the way that our friendship began in between Watsonville and Salvador. It is very important. This, with this friendship, other avenues are developed, education and social programs. The community of Salvador are inviting you to visit Santiago Masahua in November of this year. To know El Salvador and for you to be part of the changes that the government of El Salvador is doing in favor of those utmost need and with limited needs. Thank you in behalf of El Salvador and the Salvadorian town. Thank you.
Thank you. San Pedro, ah, sí, gracias. Gracias. Anyone else from the public that would like to address this? This is your opportunity. Okay, CNN, then we will come to the council and Ms. Belisich.
You starting a new tradition here?
Mm-hmm.
Two weeks, two times, twice.
Well, this is great.
Okay, well, I'll start with activities that have been going on in the community. Sons of Italy had a great meeting last week and their annual barbecue is coming up in July. Of course, the, I'm a fifty-fifty, so the Slavic barbecue is also in July, the next weekend. So there's two of them. And I hope that many people will attend those barbecues. We had the Zone 7 Board meet right here. And I want everyone to understand that this may be a long process. We've been at it for a long time. But I think we are making progress. The Army Corps of Engineers, they have to help us out. And we have Congressman Panetta. I know we've had Congressman Farr previously, but Congressman Panetta is working with the Army Corps and hopefully we'll have some results. What does that mean? Well, it doesn't mean it's going to happen this fall or this winter. We're talking probably a year to get the plans going. I would say if we're lucky, we'll see three years. In the meantime, the city and the county are working, and the county of Monterey continue to work on the levy to try and patch it along until we get this permanent solution. So don't give up hope. Just keep remembering that we have your best interest. We are trying to get something done. It's just government is too slow. But that's where we are. So I wanted to give you an update on that. We had the Ag Dinner. Several of us attended that. Where we had the Farmer of the Year. And it was a nice event held by all, by the farmers. Knights of Columbus had a great dinner on last weekend. And of course, we have the Fourth of July coming up. And you know, this event that's happening is really special because it's at the airport and we are hoping that many people will not light off all the fireworks that go off everywhere. There is a thousand dollar fine. People need to know that, be aware of it. And what is the process? Call the police department if you see that happening? So don't hesitate to call the police. We need to try and, you know, it's a cultural thing, all of us. That's the, we've had this thing where we want our own fireworks. And so we go out and we light them. And it's safe and sane, that's one thing. But these big booms and they're beautiful, but very, very dangerous. And so this year, we've put them at the airport. I think it's a good thing and hopefully all of you will join us at this event, a free event. And then we had, I heard about this smoke alarms in Bay Village. And I have to say that the senior community is very appreciative of that. It's a great thing that the smoke detectors and smoke alarms are being put into housing in the senior community. And I'm sure it will be in other parts of the community too. And of course, the seniors are still waiting for the third fire station or paramedic station or whatever it ends up to be. But our City Manager is working with, trying to get something going along those lines. So that's a good thing. And then, of course, today, all of us were there with the Metro ribbon cutting, but I'm going to let Jimmy talk about that. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Tina Kaufman.
Thank you. I won't continue with the items that have been repeated regarding our holidays that are coming up. PD Historical is going to be having their luncheon and that will be held on Saturday over here on Beach Street. So we're going to be engaging them with, again, the 150th anniversary. A lot will be going on this following year. We'll be putting together the master calendar. So we encourage all of you that are having events throughout the year for planning to let us know so we can make sure that you're included on the calendar of events that will be helping celebrate the anniversary for 150 years next year. The other thing that we're working on is the, at the plaza, is the bandstand. And we're putting together some organization to raise some money. And the purpose of this money is going to go ahead and put together the plans a historical architect will help us with to, to make sure that we're historically preserving the bandstand. So that our goal is to go ahead and see what we can put together for next year in celebration of our 150th. So look for some of those events that are going to go on. I think we're trying to get Rotary and a few other service organizations that can help us get this jump started. And so that, it's been exciting to be part of that Parks and Rec division there. We've got a nonprofit agency. If you've got any funding that you'd like to earmark for that, I'm sure Parks and Rec would be very happy to hear from you. Other events that are going on, again, the list has been with the spirit of Watsonville. They need volunteers. Doug Mattis is an employee here. And if you would like to help out to set things up at the airport for our Fourth of July event, please feel free to reach him because I'm sure that we can use a few more hands out there. And again, we're getting some movies in the park. We're getting ready for also the National Night Out. Where you'll see some things roll out at Ramsey for the Parks and Rec. Got some, the lunches that are going in the parks over the summer as well, so that our youth can go ahead and get some nutrition while they're not in school for their lunches. And again, overall, just a good celebration for this, this holiday time. Again, keep it safe and sane. Your pets are the ones that are traumatized by all of the illegal fireworks that are out there. So please keep in mind that it isn't just us watching everything fireworks-wise. It has a big impact on a lot of the animals that we have in this community as well. So, enough said.
Thank you. Ms. Dutra.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our meeting and everybody at home who's watching us. I appreciate you guys tuning in this evening. I want to touch on a couple of things. One is, I attended the Pearl Valley Historical Association. They had a mixer. And they were showcasing their 20th, 1920s clothes. So if you're into fashion or what they were wearing back in the 20s, they've done their whole house on Beach Street is dedicated to the wardrobe of military wardrobe for, to what the women wore. It was quite interesting. So, and you get a good history of, you know, what, what was happening here in the Pearl Valley through, you know, back in the 20s. So it was really interesting to go and I appreciate them. I believe they're having an event coming up on Saturday, the first, at their location. So if anyone's interested in that, you can give them a call. I also attended the Santa Cruz County Farm Bureau, the Santa Cruz Farm Bureau, their annual meeting. And congratulations to Georgia and Ice Camp for being Farmer of the Year. We're definitely a progressive county. We are, when women are becoming the Farmers of the Year, we know that we are, we are definitely progressive here and that's something to be proud of. So, and I also wanted to talk about today, we had the ribbon cutting at the Watsonville Metro Station. Myself and Oscar Ríos, Mayor Ríos, sit on the board. We put some pictures up of the ribbon cutting. I would, we were having our ribbon cutting today and we opened up our customer service booth there. So the, the station opened up in the 90s. This is the first time since the 90s that we have had a full-time staff member to be a customer service rep in the Watsonville Station. So right behind that group is the window that we put in and it also goes on into the inside. And we've also created a Parrot Cruise Certification Office. So no longer, seniors, if you're at home and you, you want to take advantage of this, you don't have to go to Pacific Station in Santa Cruz anymore. You can come right here to Watsonville. We're open eight to five, Monday through Friday, and you can get certified here for Parrot Cruise. So the services are down here in Southern, in South County. It's something to be proud of. And it's, it's, as you can see, we had such a huge group. I want to say thank you to all, all, the entire council came. Our Assistant City Manager came. I want to say thank you. You know, it was just a great showing of what community is about and I really appreciate all of you being there. So I can, and we're going to continue to do projects at the station over the years. We're looking into redoing the mural and also doing some art outside as well as doing some more changes on the inside of the station. So it's, we've come a long way. We've recently painted it and put new lighting and cameras outside, but we got a lot, we got a ways to go still. So continue to support your Metro and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Garcia.
I'm going to report just on two events. First, I attended the Campaign for Sensible Transportation Meeting that was here in our library where there was two presentations. The first presentation was on community support for a coastal rail and trail which would provide rail and a 32-mile paved bike and pedestrian path along the length of the county from Davenport to Watsonville. The second presentation was that instead of a rail, that we have a bus rapid transit along with a bike and pedestrian path. So information and data was given to support one or the other. Although there was not a presentation on it, there is a third option which is being proposed by a group called Greenway where they are proposing to take out all rail tracks completely and just have a wider, more beautiful trail and park. We are being asked to contact our electants to support one of the first two and to donate or volunteer to Friends of the Rail and Trail or the Land Trust of Santa Cruz County. It's our opportunity to have a voice in the option for public transit. Secondly, I had the opportunity along with Mayor Ríos to attend the Annual National Association of Latino Elected Officials Conference in Dallas, Texas. Naleo is a national nonprofit, nonpartisan organization. And I really learned so much from the workshops and plenary sessions that addressed issues such as education, workforce development, homelessness, LGBTQ, anti-immigration, 2020 census, and so much more. I actually came back with questions that I'll be sending tomorrow to our City Manager and staff in how to best address these issues here in Watsonville. And of course, at the conference, they all also kept us busy in the evenings with several events. My favorite was the Dallas Museum of Art where they were having an exhibit of artwork by Frida Kahlo, Diego Rivera, José Clemente Orozco, and several other avant-garde Mexican artists. And I also enjoyed, to my surprise, and I shouldn't have been surprised, but I enjoyed meeting Latino elected officials from states, from Nebraska, Idaho, Rhode Island, Iowa, and so many other states that you wouldn't think there'd be Latinos, but we're all over the place. That concludes my report.
Well, thank you very much. Mr. Hernandez.
Good evening. So I attended some of the similar events that some of the council did, the Historical Association Mixer, you know, they're going to be they're a huge asset to our community, especially with the 150th coming. Me and Lowell attended a tour of Whiskey Hill Farms which has bloom distillation that makes makes a bio, it makes actually ethanol. They make ethanol in a sustainable manner with food waste. And they're going to be looking at real soon, trying to come in here into the community as well. So I look forward to that. It was a great presentation. I also attended the Knights of Columbus 21st Anniversary. And you know, I learned a lot about that group there and have been learning about it. You know, they do so much for charitable causes here in the community. I also attended the Metro Station Grand Opening and I want to thank Council Member Dutra for all the work that he does on the metro, you know, behind the scenes. And it's, I look forward to, you know, phase two of what's happening there at the Metro Station. It's also a big boost there for the area that it's in too as well. So thank you for all your hard work there on the metro. I think all the things have been announced that are happening, there's only one that I've got to announce. Before I do that though, I also want to thank and welcome our new CAO for the county. Former City Manager Carlos Palacios is now the, at the head of the county. So I want to congratulate him as well. Coming up on Thursday, and I know that one of the, one of the public speakers came up and spoke on this issue right now. But we have a Vision Zero presentation coming up on Thursday. At this June 29th at four o'clock at the Simpkins Swim Center. And what Vision Zero is, it's a presentation where it's a program that looks at preventing bike and pedestrian accidents. But more importantly, preventing bike and pedestrian deaths. And looking at all the different ways to, to approach it through, you know, whether it's planning, through education, public works, engineering. So I'm going to make my way in and attend it. I'm actually going to do a far drive to get there, even though it's in Santa Cruz, I'm coming from Monterey. But I really encourage people that, you know, to encourage, to encourage them to attend this, this presentation. Lastly, I have a quick note. You know, Fourth of July is coming around. I'm a pet owner. I got several pets. This is the time that pets get lost the most of all times of the year. So make sure that you get ID tags for them or update their ID tags with a new phone number or address. Update a current photo of them. You know, make sure you have a comfortable bed for them on Fourth of July with a blanket. Turn up the TV or the music loud. You know, keep their favorite toys there. Give them treats if the big M100s go off because they get really scared. And if it's, if it's evening time, close your windows because they will jump out of, you know, even second-story windows. Cats as well too, they'll do, they're the same way. So keep your pets safe. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Mr. Hertz.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I think the council is very busy council and I particularly want to thank Mr. Dutra for his work on Metro and Dr. Belisich with her work on Zone 7. Two things that give us access and safety in the community. And so I think the council really continues to outdo itself with being everywhere all the time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you again. Pinto Lake is reopening. So make your way out to Pinto Lake when you can and see that beautiful resource that we have. We've spent a lot of money trying to fix Pinto Lake up and make it healthful and safe, safe. And you'll find it's one of the most beautiful locations in the Pajaro Valley. Cal Giant is going to have its annual steak barbecue, skirt steak barbecue. And this will occur on the 18th. And the charities that are supported are Casas, Casa Grind Out Hunger, Monoc Services, Teen Kitchen Project, Digital Nest, Jacob's Heart Foundation, Pajaro Valley Shelter Services, and the Watsonville Senior Center. So those are good charities to support locally and to be able to eat one of the fine skirt steaks from the Giant Berry Farms barbecue at the same time. I wanted to thank Mr. Zora, but I believe he's already left for bringing, bringing the issue to our attention of the Green Valley and Main Street landscaping and intersection is the gateway to. is a gateway to Watsonville and, and we should find whatever we can to help support the beautification of all streets and intersections and Mr. Zora's done a nice job there. That area used to be in my district, but it was cut out during the last census somehow. But it certainly has made beautification improvements with the flowers that Mr. Zora has planted and it's a lovely home he has. Smoke detectors, we can all get a new smoke detector somehow. We might have to pay for them, but the, the mobile home parks are lined up and have already received some and the senior villages are receiving some as well. And so, I want to thank fire for their work there and, and our hats off always to the police department. Nordic Naturals has been approved for a 62,000 square foot addition for their research and scientific end of things. That's going to bring some much-needed construction as well as jobs to the community and we're excited about that. And I want to say thank you to our Salvadorian community for the invite to El Salvador. I, I hope to be able to take you up on that. I had a wonderful time with the president when he was here and we certainly welcomed him well and we know that we'll be taken care of in Salvador. Lastly, you've heard about 4th of July and everything else. If you see something, say something. Use the Nixle app to report crime and like I said, if you see something, say something. I think that may be it for my announcements. Thank you very much. Oh, no, one more thing. In today's Pajaronian, and I know everybody reads the paper, well, maybe not everybody reads it, but many people do. Coach Sunderland, he's celebrating his retirement, 47 years at Watsonville High School in the auto shop. Can you imagine how his hearing must be gone and his, he's probably hoarse from 47 years at instructing.
Weren't your classrooms right next door to it?
It was around the corner and I was, I was pretty lucky to know Coach Sunderland. So, take a look in today's paper if you will and, and if you see Coach Sunderland, he's probably taught 10,000, 20,000 students over the, over his 47-year career. We're really happy that he was, is with us and he's not going away. He's going to do something here in the community.
He's still, he's still teaching driver's training. So, if you need to learn how to drive, come out to the adult school, he's, he's there. He's the chief, chief driver. So, he's not going away.
Emma Jones?
We love him.
Thank you very much. As you can see, you know, this council is very active. So, thank you very much for every place and every word that we've been represented. Thank you. And the city knows that they're giving a view of every council member in their districts. So, again, thank you very much. Thank you very much for El Comité Saboreño. Can you stand up just to see who you are, please? Thank you very much for being here and definitely what Vice Mayor said, we are definitely going to take on your invitation and we're going to be talking some more. So, thank you for coming here and I invite you to keep coming and visit us. This Thursday at the Mello Center, there's going to be a educational forum, Know Your Rights in Immigration, and it's going to start at six o'clock and it's being put forth by Univision, Canal 67. And then after that, they're going to have a 6:30 some live interviews in the plaza. So, we should be looking into that. I also think we should be paying attention to what is going on right now with the ACA or Obamacare. We're facing a really, really danger if it passes through the senate now and we're talking about 23 million people being left out. So, there's, there has to be some kind of adjustment to the ACA, but to do away with it, I think it would be really dangerous and it would be unfortunate for especially all the poor, all the poor people. And this is just to benefit a few, 1% of the population. So, let's pay attention to that. Also, I wanted to pass the council SB 35 information and this is very important for us especially because, you know, we know we have a problem on, on housing and rents and it's a big problem. But now the state has taken on this bill and we really are urged that we oppose this bill. It really tries to take that control of the local communities, makes unrealistic standards for city, imposes complete unrealistic timelines. Once the project is approved, then the developer has up to four years to begin construction. In other words, although the city must rush to approve the projects, the developers can sit around and wait. There's more on this bill, this was just a little brief. So, I want the council to look at it and for us to oppose this bill. Also, in the New York Times, this past 25th, the press, there was an article that came out and this article is very important because it compares all the lies of Trump. Everything that he has said that he was going to do to win his election, they're all, they're all lies. So, look into the article and you can see truth or false. Okay? So, this is the New York Times and the opinion, it's also in the opinion online if you want to see, the lies of Trump. Okay? Very important. And a lot of what Ms. Garcia said of going to Naleo, you see this button here that I'm wearing. This button represents SB 4. SB 4 is a, is a bill that the governor is trying to pass in the state of Texas to make sanctuary cities illegal. And any sheriff, and it's quite a coincidence, there's a lot of sheriffs now that they're Latinos. You know, what a coincidence that any sheriff that opposes the rules, they're going to lose their jobs. So, this is what's going on in Texas and I wanted to share this with you because we in California are going the other way. We're going the other way where California might, will become, and may become a sanctuary state. And the leadership means a lot. So, please pay attention and let's support, you know, the people that are fighting against SB 4. Again, thank you for all the activities that are going on right now. We're doing everything that we can to keep the public informed and I think that it's good for you to come and also express your views. Okay? Mr. City Manager?
I'm here.
Do you have something, Mr. Hernandez, to say?
No.
No? Okay. With that, we're going to move on then. Any report from close session?
Thank you, Mayor. The council discussed several labor matters which will be considered by the council later on this evening, but took no action.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, we're going to come back to, now, we're going to have a presentation by the Diversity Center of Santa Cruz County regarding youth programs in Watsonville.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alex Santana, Lead Youth Program Coordinator for the Diversity Center of Santa Cruz County. You all have seen me two other times, so I hope you're not tired of seeing my face around here.
No.
Hi, my name is Jamie Joy. I'm also the Youth Program Coordinator. Happy to be here.
Hello, my name is Eli Martin-Hirón. I come as a representative as one of the, one of the youth from the Queer Youth Program.
So, what we wanted to do today is to share a brief presentation on the services and what the Diversity Center's Youth Program does. You all generously awarded the Diversity Center's Youth Program with $5,000 and since it's the first time the Diversity Center's Youth Program has received funding from the city, we wanted to share with all of you what kind of services we do.
So, our, our youth program kind of falls under three tiers. We do community support and leadership. So, what that typically looks like is we have meetups that happen every Friday in Watsonville to give youth a space to connect with each other and have activities and just social support. We also provide support as mentors. We give them platforms for places to do workshops, like at different conferences. Last November, we took, with the Queer Task Force, we took about 180, what is it? We took about 180 teens from the entire county up to San Francisco for a conference and the PV School District actually donated the school buses. So, that was really awesome and some of the youth in our program were able to lead workshops up there. We've also, one of the photos is a triangle speakers training. So, we did a training here in Watsonville on public speaking to support young people getting to share their stories at local schools. So, that's a little bit of what we do. We try to empower youth to speak, to speak up and to be confident in who they are.
So, as Jamie was saying, one of the fact, one of the major tiers of what our youth program does is creating community and we do that through creating spaces for social bonding and fun. We have an annual queer camp which has been going on for the past, I want to say 15 to 20 years. And this year it's happening again in the beginning of August. We have it in Mount Madonna and this year is the first year that we've had over 40 students apply to, to go to the camp and our cap is 40 students. So, it was a really amazing opportunity or amazing experience to see so many LGBTQ youth who've heard of our camp wanting to come out and participate in that event. And at the camp, we, we do a lot of workshops. We, we bring volunteer counselors for the, for the three-day, two-night trip and we have workshops where the students are talking about their identities, where they're making connections, where they're building networks and, you know, they get to have a fun time with each other. And it's a, it's a safe space out in the woods and they get to be, we joke around, they get to be queer in nature.
So, I mentioned every Friday, we have a meetup in Watsonville. We have one in Santa Cruz also. Just to get an idea of what we do at these meetups, we sometimes bring in guest speakers. We actually had councilmember Jimmy Dutra come. Thank you. That was awesome. We do, we give them kind of like workshops on art, poetry, writing, healthy boundaries, relationships, health, food, peer counseling, self-defense, anything that they're showing interest in or what might be helpful to their lives. And we try to bring in people from the Watsonville community or the Santa Cruz community to speak to them so they can have positive role models. And sometimes they also just want to hang out with each other and that's totally awesome also.
Yeah. If I can add, the Santa Cruz meetup has been going on for about, I think since the early 2000s and the Watsonville meetup is, is fairly new. It's only been around for the past year and a half or so. And that group came about because of a need of, of having queer resources down in Watsonville so that students didn't have to take a bus ride all the way up to Santa Cruz just to be able to see other queers, queer students who are out. And, you know, being from the Watsonville area, being queer identified, it would have been amazing to have something as awesome as this when I was growing up, at least to know that there were other people out there, even though I was still closeted in high school.
And I just want to add that Alex actually started the group in December of 2015 and because of the work he's done, he actually won an award which you all, I think you all heard about a few weeks ago. So, it's really awesome to be recognized by the community.
So, to build on some of the work that we do, we work closely with the students to develop ideas of what kind of events they want to see in their community. One of the biggest events that we've had recently this year was our Queer Youth Prom titled Party in the Closet. We chose that name because some students aren't out to their families and they wanted to make sure that if the parents asked where they were going, it was a little discreet. So, you know how much more discreet can you, can you be than having a party in the closet? And the, the prom was hosted at the location of where are you, Friday Youth Meetups are at, which is the First Christian Church. They're our partners in providing us the space and they, they loaned us the, the space for free and together with other community partners, we raised up about $1,200 for the
So, my name is Eli Martin-Hirón, like I said, and I am a senior graduate of the class of 2017 of Watsonville High School. And through the Sexuality and Gender Acceptance Club at my school, I met these wonderful people. And with the Diversity Center, I have found my voice in LGBTQ plus community. And coming from a home of not accepting parents, I didn't really find myself to be as important in the LGBT community, nor did I feel like I could identify or be a part of it. But with these people and the Diversity Center, they helped me create the Party in the Closet. A group of me and my friends were thinking of having this as our community action project and I didn't really think it would become a thing and with the Diversity Center and their various connections, it became a thing. And it impacted many of us, many, many, many of us. And like as we said, that, that's a picture of the Sexuality and Gender Acceptance Club there in the photo booth that we had. And I just want to say thank you for awarding us and the Diversity Center with the money because with that, we can continue on and spread awareness and raise the visibility.
And we weren't anticipating such a high turnout. We were expecting maybe like 70 or 80 students to come, but in the end, about 120, maybe a little over than that, more than that, ended up showing up that evening.
Right. And that was 120 youth from Watsonville and Santa Cruz. So, it was really amazing to see them all together in one space, celebrating from all different high schools. Usually the proms are really segregated in different schools in different counties. So, this was a way to bring all of them together. So, recently, we, every year, we, we do a rally in Santa Cruz to, around the National Day of Silence, which is an event to raise awareness about LGBTQ bullying in schools. And this year, Alex and I decided to organize a second rally and bring it down to Watsonville. And we were a little bit nervous about how that would be received. We did it in the plaza, we kind of created a makeshift stage by a tree and, and we actually received such amazing support from the Watsonville community and cars were passing by and honking their support and people came around and stood and listened to the youth speak and we're definitely planning on making that now an annual event and we look forward to maybe inviting any of you to come in the future. Do you want to add anything else to that?
The Sexuality and Gender Alliance Club from Watsonville High School was also pivotal in helping us spread the word and getting all of the students from Watsonville High to come out and join. It really would not have been such a, it wouldn't have had such a big turnout had we not collaborated with the Saga at Watsonville High and also the QSA at PV High School. So, we're definitely not working alone. We're definitely working in partnership with the other queer groups in, in the different high schools and also middle schools.
Yeah, here's just some fun photos from the event, some of the signs that they were holding. There's the one on Main Street in Watsonville. And there's the group photo at the end. We actually had a lot of teachers come out and support also, which was great. So, Alex mentioned that we're not working in silos. We do a lot of outreach also. So, this is a large list of some of the organizations that we work with in Santa Cruz. We work with Encompass Youth Services, Monarch Services, Pajaro Valley Pride, the First Christian Church, Planned Parenthood, the County Office of Education, so many more. We're, we're just building outreach and so that all of the organizations down in Watsonville and Santa Cruz know what we do. We also brought some of our brochures. If this helps, we can leave them here and think, was that it? Oh, wait, no, there's more.
So, just to give you a quick scope of like our outreach and our averages in terms of attendance at our youth groups. In Santa Cruz, we see about 15 to 20 students every week and in Watsonville, on average 10 to 20. It ranges depending on what's going on in school, if it's summer, if we have a big event coming up. Countywide, our visits so far in 2017 have been to 48 schools altogether, nine high schools, six middle schools, five charters, and three alt-ed schools. And these are schools that have gay straight alliances, queer straight alliances, or have invited us to come speak and present on our services. In Watsonville alone, in 2017, out of the 48, 22 of our visits have been to schools in Watsonville. Those have been four highs, the four local high schools and the, and four middle schools in the city who have queer straight alliances and sexuality and gender alliances.
Like I said, I just want to express more on not just my impact, but other impacts of the Sexuality and Gender Acceptance Club with the Diversity Center. Many of the students at Watsonville High School don't really feel like the Watsonville community is quite accepting of the LGBT community, less because of the less visibility. So, therefore, we have tried to step to step up, and with the help of the Diversity Center, we have created the Breaking the Silence Rally, which we believe had been the first Breaking the Silence Rally to happen here in Watsonville. And I'm just amazed that I was allowed to be a part of the Gay History in Watsonville.
Thank you very much.
These are just some accomplishments we did over the year. You can read those off as you please. We've helped support GSAs at schools. We've gone to present at national conferences, and we're, we've also partnered with Monarch Services to do an assembly at Lakeview Middle School. So these are ways we're just trying to support the Watsonville community, and we couldn't do it without the support of the City Council. So thank you for having us here tonight, and we look forward to maintaining a partnership with you all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. You know, when I was in Naleo with Ms. Garcia, we attended a workshop, and in that workshop, it was about, you know, the LGBTQ presentation in all of our cities, and especially for the Latinos. And the presenters gave their own, you know, stories and their own history. I was able to also comment that we, just a couple of weeks ago, presented resolution and also certificates to the community today that is here with us and that we are supporting your effort and the issues that you're bringing forward. So it's being known, okay, nationally. Thank you very much. Okay?
I just want to say thank you guys for coming, and I'm, you know, a huge fan and, you know, family, and I appreciate all that you do for our community. And again, this wasn't around when I was going to high school, but you guys are paving the way, and you're going to make it that much easier for students and kids that are growing up to, it just going to, so it can just be a normal thing, you know? People won't have to look twice about it or think twice about it. So it's bravery, and you guys are brave, and everybody, every single day, people go to high school and, you know, or middle school and have to, you know, kind of, it's hard enough to deal with it, you know, you're different in some way, but then to, you know, try to live a life, and it takes bravery. That's basically what I can say. And I just want to say thank you, and thanks to First Christian Church for all that they've done for the community. They've really stepped up, and so, so thanks.
Mr. Hernandez?
Quick question. You know, the Fourth of July Parade's coming up, and it always tries to reflect everyone in the community. I was just wondering if the Diversity Center and the clubs here in Watsonville are going to be part of that.
There's no plan for this year, but maybe that's something that we do for next year.
Okay. Any other comments?
I think that's why we brought our brochures and our cards. If anyone wants to connect with us, we're very open to you pointing.
You can give them the brochures.
Okay, we will do that. Is there any other last comments or questions while we're here?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. This is items, and people and the public can speak, and items that are in the consent agenda. Any members of the audience that would like to address us on the consent agenda? Seeing none, bring it back to council. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Gomez?
Yes, we have a million-dollar FEMA fund, and I'd like to see a little bit more information given to the public about what the expenditure for the FEMA money will be for item F. And I do have an item C that I want to make a comment on as well.
Okay.
Mayor, council, my name's William Hayes, the Acting Assistant Finance Director, or Administration Service Director, not used to that. There were three declared disasters throughout the winter, and the city of Watsonville will be filing, or have filed last week, claims through all three of the different disasters. The first one was a total of $72,000 that we are claiming, and those costs were already incurred because it was like a storm drainage disaster and a little bit of police and fire overtime. The second disaster was about $400,000, and, but there's about eight projects in Pinto Lake, and then a couple more and a couple other of the city's parks. And then there was also a little bit of public safety overtime in that one. And those costs have not been expended yet, and they won't be expended under this until we get approval from FEMA if those projects are approved. And then the third disaster, we have about $450,000, and there's three major projects in that, and they were all slides. There's one at the fire range at the airport, and then there's a road at the airport that had a slide, and then there's also a slide at Green Valley. And those are all the projects.
And what timeframe are we looking at receiving this FEMA?
Right now, we just filed the claims with them last week, and they are already having inspectors go to them. It's a long process. They will inspect them. They will come up with what they believe is qualified expenses, and then they will file them for us, and then we will be notified, and we will receive a funding notice on each individual project, or we will receive a rejection notice that they don't feel like they were storm-related. So it's a long process. I know it took like ten years to finish the earthquake here.
And these will come back to council as they come up with their findings?
No, this is why we're asking you now for these. If they don't get approved by FEMA and we don't get reimbursed, then they would come back to council.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, normally, the federal fiscal year ends September 30th, and they have to look at their funding pot, so we should know probably by the end of the year sometime.
Yeah, if not sooner.
Thank you.
You have a question, item C?
Yes, item C. I just wanted to point out that item C is for, are you going to be able to tell us a little bit of item C?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. It's over half a million dollars, and I figure it needs to be aired out in the public, so if you can give us a bit of highlight on that.
The item C intends to modify our joint powers agreement with, for the animal shelter services with the county. The city has paid about the same amount for many years since we've been part of this JPA since 2008. So the amount per se is not changing as much as the amendment is to include the city of Capitola, who was not a member of the JPA in the past, and now they are a member of the JPA and will be sharing the cost of the readiness to serve for all the cities in the county, including the county, County of Santa Cruz, City of Scotts Valley, and City of Santa Cruz and Watsonville. So now the city of Capitola will take part in the JPA, and the amendment is just to include them.
And this covers, we have a facility on Airport. Does all of this really go to that particular location that's in Watsonville, or is this more than one location?
More than one location. The county is served with the two sites, the one here in Watsonville, which is mainly used to receive animals that are dropped or picked up, and the shelter in, on Seventh Street in Santa Cruz, Capitola, which provides services for animals and adoptions and other needs.
And the investment in this is so that we don't have to create our own, which at that point would be a lot more costly?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, Ms. Dutra, please.
Thank you. Just two comments. I wanted to comment on A, I believe it's the light going in on Beach and Aloney Parkway. And do we have an idea when that's going to go in, just to be clear to the public? That's, I guess, that's, well, Felipe and I cannot share the district back there. It's technically in his district, but we use that corner a lot.
Good evening. Maria Esther Rodriguez, Assistant Director, Public Works. With the bids expected to open in August, we would expect to come back and award that in September. And then depending upon how long it takes to secure the posts, et cetera, sometimes it can take some time. Hopefully, we can see that built by the end of this year.
Okay. So it's going to be lights on, I guess, three, four, all four? No, three.
It's a T intersection, so it's three.
Okay. Well, okay. So that's something to look forward to out there, especially with all that new housing that we've approved back there. That's going to be something that's probably needed. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for that update. And then my last thing is, I just wanted to say that the issue that I had earlier about the MOU has been taken care of because the language will be cleaned up and cleaned up, so I'm not going to do any amendments.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes, I just wanted to emphasize how pleased I am with the resolution to support the Paris Climate Agreement. And I'm just hoping that somehow we're going to be able to publicize that we did pass this resolution so the rest of Watsonville and others know about our support.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Mr. Hertz?
I will move the consent agenda.
Okay, motion?
I'll second.
Second. Questions? Ms. Velisich?
Just a comment that I'm happy to see that the Power Valley Prevention and Student Assistance continues to support Caminos, and I think it's a great organization that comes and helps our city. So nothing negative, just a positive comment. And along with that, traffic signal on West Beach and Aloney Parkway, we need another signal.
Seeing any more questions. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Haben Gomez?
Yes.
Dutra?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hurst?
Yes.
Rios?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move to a presentation of first-time homebuyers and down payment assistance program. Staff report?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Lori Blackwood. I'm a Senior Admin Analyst with the Community Development Department. I'm here to give you a brief overview of the down payment, or first-time homebuyer programs currently offered in the city of Watsonville. Right now, we have two programs, first-time homebuyer and down payment assistance. The first-time homebuyer program is to assist low-income households purchase market rate and deed-restricted units depending on the funding source. Down payment assistance is available to assist low- and above-moderate income households purchase deed-restricted units only. To participate in each program, you must be a first-time homebuyer. First-time homebuyer definition is an individual or individuals or an individual and his or her spouse who have not owned a home during the three-year period before the purchase of the home with subsidy assistance. The city has been operating the first-time homebuyer program since 1995 and continues to do so with funds awarded by the state of California through a competitive grant process. The down payment assistance program was established in 2003 but was suspended in 2012 due to the loss of funding with the dissolution of redevelopment agencies. The program was reinstated in January of this year with a different funding source. In addition to being a first-time homebuyer, the borrower must qualify for a minimum thirty-year fixed-rate first mortgage loan, provide 3% of their own funds towards purchase of the property, have a minimum credit score of 620, have a household income at or below the maximum limit allowed for the funding source, have a proposed housing debt-to-income ratio between 30 and 45%, and a combined ratio which includes your housing debt and other debt of no more than 50%. In addition, they must complete a homebuyer education The property must be located within the city limits, be used as the buyer's principal place of residence, have been vacant or owner-occupied for the entire three-month period prior to the date of purchase, pass a housing and lead-based paint inspection, and sell for no more than the maximum sales price limit set by the city if purchasing a deed-restricted Many of the requirements for both programs are the same with some differences. Under the first-time homebuyer program, eligible properties must be, may be market rate or deed-restricted units if allowed by the funding source. Income limits are based on the county median income limits as determined by HUD for home and HCD for Calhome. Purchase price limits varies by funding source. Currently, the maximum sales price limit allowed under home is $489,000, and the county median sales price for Calhome is roughly around $800,000. Loan limits also differ. Under the first-time homebuyer program, it is the lesser of three items: the funding source limit, 25% of the purchase price, or the affordability gap, which is the difference between the buyers, what the buyer's funds are, and the funds needed to purchase. Sorry about that. Affordability restrictions. The first-time homebuyer program does not have any required deed restrictions. However, if the funds are being used to purchase a deed-restricted unit, then the applicable affordability restrictions for that unit would apply. Payment terms. The repayment of the loan is deferred for 30 years at 3% simple interest. These are the first-time homebuyer income limits. The home limits took effect June 15th, and Calhome took effect May 24th. These are the current subsidy limits. For Calhome, it's roughly $57,650. And for home, it depends on the bedrooms, number of bedrooms. The down payment assistance program is city-funded and may only be used to purchase deed-restricted units. It also allows moderate and above-moderate income borrowers to receive assistance. However, repayment of the loan for these higher income limits are not deferred and must be repaid over a 30-year period in monthly installments. In addition, the loan limits are lower and depend on whether you live and/or work in the city limits. These are the current, these are the current down payment assistance income limits. They haven't changed since 2008. The application process is very simple. The applicant must first pre-qualify first mortgage loan, enter into a purchase agreement to purchase a home. Once they have done that, their buyer, their lender, will submit an application to the city for review. The city works with the lender to determine eligibility, and if approved, the city will perform an inspection. Once the property has passes an inspection, loan documents are prepared and sent to the title company. The title company will obtain all the necessary signatures and return the executed documents to the city. They will also send any documents that need to be recorded to the county. Homebuyers are only eligible to receive assistance from one city program. For additional information, people can contact the city's Housing Division at 768-3080, or read about the housing programs on the city's website. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Blackwood. Now's the time for questions from the council, and then we'll get to the public input. Ms. Garcia?
I think we're so fortunate to have these two types of programs to help with the issues of housing here in Watsonville. Recently, I had a one-to-one conversation with a gentleman who's a counselor in one of our high school, one of our high schools here in the district. And on Facebook, he was just so, so upset because he just was looking for housing, and she, he says it's, "I'll never be able to buy a house," and on and on and on. And when I spoke to him and I told him about these two programs, he didn't have a clue. So what are we doing to publicize, to let our community know that these two programs are available for them?
Well, we have our housing website. We also attend different community events to advertise the programs.
Such as which events?
Well, we attend the Chili Cook-Off that goes on annually in August. We've been attending that event since the beginning. I believe this is the fifth year, fourth or fifth year that we've attended. We've always been there. We also do presentations. We were at CET, I forget what that stands for, but we did a presentation to a group of students there, adult students there, about our housing programs. We also get contacted many times by different Realtors groups, and we will go and do presentations there or provide them with information. We also, once a year, will advertise in the newspaper about our housing programs, La Ganga. We partnered with Public Works to advertise the different city programs. We also send out once a year mailings with the city's utility bills, at least once a year. And we get a lot of interest. The problem is there's very year. And we get a lot of interest. The problem is there's very limited housing stock for sale right now and that's part of the problem.
Mr. Hernandez?
So, you mentioned that it can be used with any other city programs, but can it be used with, I know that there's a different HUD program that also assists people that are part of HUD for some type of loan assistance. Can it be used with other programs like that or like, let's say, for example, VA and stuff like that?
It's frequently used with Cal-HFA loans, which is, I think they're a HUD program. The FHA, it, I think it can be used with FHA loans but not on deed-restricted units.
Do you, do you know after all the, all the housing that has been approved over the last 16 months, what's the total that would be under affordable?
You mean, the ones that have been approved for sale?
No, the ones that have been approved to be built.
To be built. I believe nine, let's see.
It would be, for most of the projects that were for sale approved, most of them were required to have 20% dedicated to affordable. So, 20% of all the units.
It's almost 80, then.
We just have Sunshine Gardens right now that will be for sale. The rest of them are going to rental. So, it would be just that particular subdivision for the 20% number that I'm aware of.
Right. However, the, the ones that were approved as for sale will have rental affordability until they go up for sale.
Between the three subdivisions that we've entered into rental or housing agreements with, there's roughly about 26 units. About nine of them will be rented until the developer decides to sell them and the other 17 are going to be for sale units. And we're hoping to sell them through a lottery process, which we're working on right now.
Can you repeat the other two that you mentioned right now? The two HUD ones and the other one?
The, you mean the program?
Yeah.
Cal-HFA? They have different funding, different mortgage products that are available, but you have to, you have to be working with a lender that's familiar with those programs.
Okay. What's the other one?
Well, FHA. FHA doesn't, will not do loans on deed-restricted units.
Further questions from the council? Ms. Kaufman Gomez?
I think it's more of a comment. Can you talk a little bit about your first-time homebuyer workshop and the requirements for the applicants?
We contract that out and currently, we only have one source and that is the Watsonville Law Center. And the requirements are dictated to us by the funding source and they have to approve the, the contract with our third party.
So, the frequency of the time that those classes are made available so that the consumer knows that they go out and get pre-qualified for a house and they get into contract and the contract is for 30 days, what do they have to ensure that they can meet the qualifications for the, the workshop in time?
My understanding that they stopped scheduling them on a regular basis and what they are is as people need them, they're given the workshop.
And then, the credit evaluation. I know you have a 620 credit score, but how about your debt-to-income ratio so that the consumers know how much of their household income can be used towards the mortgage?
The, the housing ratio, is that what you're asking about?
The debt to the income ratio? So, out of their gross income, what percentage can be set aside to make this a payment?
Well, there's two different ratios. First, their housing costs have to be between 30, they can't be less than 30% and can't be more than 45%. And then, there's the, what they frequently refer to as the back-end ratio, which is your overall debt, which is your housing costs and then credit cards and things like that. That cannot exceed 50%.
It's a good program. I've used it frequently for many of my family, so I know that it's out there and not a lot of people are fluent with it because it does take a lot of extra time and education for the consumer, but, and the limitation of, of course, inventory. So, it's been tough.
It certainly does sound like a good program with a lot of hoops and regulations and not much funding behind it, unfortunately. Could you tell us how many participants there have been since 1995?
Unfortunately, I cannot, but if you're interested, I can try to get that for you.
Very good. The public might be interested in that as well. Further questions from the council?
I have one more question. I, I know that we have a certain number of affordable units because you track them, because I know owner occupancy is a requirement. How many were lost as a result of the recession?
I think I did a survey of the units not too long ago and really only about 25 units have been lost. At that time, I did the survey, which was about a year ago. Since then, we've lost a few more to foreclosures, but not, not as many as we originally thought.
And what is our total now that we have available for resale? I mean, not that they're actively reselling, but the ones that are still within the program so that if they do come up, how many homes do we really have in the community?
I don't have the exact number, but I believe it's over 240 units.
So, 240 units in the entire city that would be deed-restricted and of the sale-price restriction?
Yes.
And how often do you update the system on the number of units that are out there available?
We constantly, every time a unit sells, we update the system.
So, the consumer needs to know to look at the website because they do list what properties are coming up. They get inquired by the owners of the properties that they may have an interest in selling it. They're required to find out what the price is that they can sell it for and then the city goes in and puts it on the website so that you can check there for anybody that was in the, that's eligible for the program.
Are there further questions from the council?
I have a question.
Mayor?
What is the average price right now for housing?
I, I just got six months' worth of data from a local realtor from the MLS and the median sales price in Watsonville is around $521,000, just a little over $521,000.
So, to qualify for this program, how much do you have to make?
You, it depends. We have the, the first-time homebuyer program is based on the funding sources that we use come from HUD and also from HCD. And so, the, the income limits for HUD are different than HCD. It was, the, the state income limits haven't changed since 2008, but the HUD limits went down. Now, they've started to come back up again and they're very, now just barely under the state income limits. And so, there's different, and then for the down payment assistance program, there's different income categories. So, there's all these different income categories. So, basically, the Watsonville's income limits, the median category is roughly close to the low-income category for HUD and the state's income limits.
If we understood all that. In other words, it's hard to get a house.
It can be.
Yes, okay. Thank you, thank you.
To finish this up, could we have any public input at this point? Anyone from the public wish to address the, the council or this agenda item? Questions, comments? You have, you have the contact information. Ms. Blackwood, thank you very much for your presentation here this evening.
I do have one more, not question, but suggestion. It'd be nice if we had like a little pamphlet just like this one we just got handed that would have both, one in Spanish, one in English, that has all the housing programs, sort of, sort of a short tidbit on all the housing programs that us as council members can distribute in all the places that we go to.
Certainly, we can put that together.
Thank you very much. Mayor, it's back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hertz. Now, moving into public hearings and ordinances, this is consideration of budget adoption for fiscal year 2017, 2019. Mr. Montoya, do you have something to say to us first?
Mr. Mayor, I do not. I will turn it over to the Assistant City Manager, Mr. Huffaker, to do presentation, following up from two weeks ago when this was heard by council.
Okay, thank you.
Council members, I apologize, but I meant to introduce the other housing staff. They're here tonight with me. Can Karina, Maria, and Angela Paz, please stand up?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Good, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. For the record, my name is Matt Huffaker. I'm the Assistant City Manager. And it's my pleasure tonight to present the fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget for your final consideration and adoption tonight. Tonight marks the second public hearing we've held with the council and the community on the budget. And as part of tonight's presentation, this will be the final adoption of that. I want to again acknowledge the council for your work and support over the last several weeks in meeting with staff to work through the proposed budget you see in front of you. I also want to acknowledge the hard work of Bill Hayes, who's been serving as our Acting Finance Director for the last several months, as well as the hard work across all of our departments. It was, again, a team effort to, to put together the, the 600-page budget that you see in front of you this evening. So, with that, I'll jump into the staff recommendations. There are a lot of words here, so bear with me, but it's important that we work through all of the approvals that the council has before you tonight. So, the first recommendation is that the Joint City Council, the City Council in its capacity as a housing successor agency and the successor agency board shall adopt the following resolutions. A, adopt the fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget plan, providing certain transfers of funds and approve the five-year capital improvement program as summarized in Exhibit 1 of your packet. And 2, that the City Council shall adopt the following resolutions or ordinances as part of the overall budget adoption. This includes establishing the total annual appropriations pursuant to the state constitution for fiscal year 2017, 18. That's Prop 4, the GAN, the GAN spending limit. And B, that the City Council adopt an ordinance to instruct Santa Cruz County to levy and collect property tax on taxable property within the city of Watsonville for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018, at the levy rate of .077% and allocating to the retirement fund. And Section C, adopt the resolution continuing the voluntary time off program for fiscal years 2017, 18, allowing employees to reduce their work week while maintaining current health benefit levels while prorating other benefits. And D, adopt a resolution to establish new purchasing limits and requirements for bidding and surplus supplies and equipment. And E, adopt a resolution approving the creation of non-operational aircraft storage rate at $1.25 or 1.25 time storage rate. Aircraft handling fee ranging from $50 to $100. Aircraft emergency runway fees, $150 and up. Non-commercial no-gas fueling, an annual fee of $15. Commercial no-gas fuel flow rate per gallon. The commercial operating permit fee per event, $250. The commercial aeronautic activity permit annual of $100. And I should also state as we're going through these that our Airport Director, Rayvon Williams, is also here tonight. He can speak to these fees in more detail if there's questions about what they're for or why, why they're being proposed. Storage unit reinstatement fee of $150. Tenant vehicle security decal fee of $5. Zone time HWL applicant name change fee of $750. Administrative processing fee of $50 and airport operation specialist service fee of $60. And F, approve a resolution authorizing the establishment of a blanket purchase order with Granite Rock for the next three calendar years in the amount of $450,000 each year, beginning in 2018. Granite Rock is a successful vendor selected after quotes for pricing of materials was obtained to Public Works and Utilities Department. And G, approve a resolution authorizing the establishment of a blanket purchase order with Polydine Incorporated, doing business as SNF Polydine Incorporated, for the purchase of polymers, floculants, I believe I'm pronouncing that correct, for the next three calendar years in the amount of $275,000 each year. And H, approve a resolution authorizing the establishment of a blanket purchase order with General Chemical Performance Products, AKA Chemtrade Logistics, for purchase of aluminum sulfate coagulant for the next three calendar years in the amount of $75,000 each year. And I, approve carryover of open POs at fiscal year end, fiscal year 2016, 17, to be encumbered in the following fiscal year 17, 18. And J, adopt a resolution approving the creation of solid waste fees, food waste collection service fees as followed. You can see A, B, C, and D based on the different cubic yard measurements. Two, solid waste fees residential customers as follows. Garbage volume, and you can see the various volumes there from 32 gallons to one cubic yard. D, concrete and dirt volume. C, tires, fee applies per item for each of the items below. Appliances, yard waste, universal waste. And then, for Section 3, solid waste fees, limited small business customers, A, microwaves, air conditioners, boilers, coolers, and the other items you see in front of you. K, approve a resolution adopting an uncodified ordinance, increasing the city council's compensation by 5% effective November 2017. And J, approve a resolution establishing and adopting certain fees related to the review and processing of medical cannabis facility applications in the city of Watsonville as follows. The application process that was presented to the council a few weeks back included multi-stepped phased application fee, and those are the fees that you see in front of you. And so, we'll move, we'll move into the presentation. The presentation is very similar to what we provided to the council and the community at the last meeting, so I won't go through each slide in great detail, but there are a few areas that I want to highlight. And then, of course, if there's any questions from the council or the public, we're happy to, happy to answer those. So, under the city charter, the city of Watsonville, Sections 1103-1105, instruct that the city manager must prepare and present a proposed budget for the ensuing fiscal year at least 30 days prior to the beginning of the next fiscal year. As part of that background, the city of Watsonville has a 2015, 2017 strategic plan that includes the priorities that the council sees in front of you. The council completed a workshop over this past year and set some additional short-time goals, which staff will be recommending. We've worked with the council over the next year to build on those goals and update the city's strategic plan to develop a 2017, 2019 strategic plan going forward. So, again, a quick snapshot of the city's budget. The total city budget is $144 million. You can see the breakdown by all the various funds. The general fund is at, is at about $40.6 million and that is an increase of a couple million from the last approved budget for the general fund. The general fund balance for the city has been improving steadily from 2012 to today. The council established a 20% target in 2015 and really aimed at trying to replenish the city's general fund cash balance, and this is used in cases of emergency or prolonged economic downturns. And we have finally reached that 20% target. However, looking at comparable cities throughout the area, while 20% is a healthy reserve, it is still well below what many of the other cities have in place, which ranges from 35% to 54% and the median being about 32. So, we need to continue working towards this. It's great that we've met the 20% reserve, but we need to continue to closely monitor cost and continue to build that fund balance. So, we've walked through the process for the budget approval and tonight, we've brought the proposed budget for final adoption. Before you see a quick summary of all of our funds consolidated, a quick snapshot of our capital improvement program. And again, what we want to highlight here is that our capital improvement program for the general fund continues to remain very limited. And so, the budget that you see in front of you tonight, as well as our five-year forecast, includes essentially zero funding from our general fund for capital and infrastructure improvement projects. And that's been the case now for many years and that maintenance is starting to catch up with us in significant deferred projects ranging from parks to community centers to our city hall. And those projects are going to have to be dealt with in the near term. And those projects are going to have to be dealt with in the near term. Measure M is the cannabis tax. We talked about how this allocation works. Some of the funding that's being proposed within the next one-year budget includes a handful of positions ranging from a Police Activities League Recreation Specialist in police, two temporary life safety inspection officers for fire, a code enforcement officer for CDD, a park maintenance worker, too, and facility attendant and recreation specialist for Parks and Community Services. And then a variety of capital investments as well. That would include a new mower for greater efficiencies in park maintenance, additional library materials and a bookmobile to increase access to some of our neighborhoods. As part of that, and rolled up in both the staffing and the capital improvements, there are a number of service enhancements, which we discussed, and we can go into more detail if there's interest, but that includes reinvesting in PAL, the Police Activities League, as well as generally trying to increase access to our library services to the community. As we move into the general fund, there are a series of staff increases that are being proposed within the budget within the general fund. That includes a halftime office assistant for the city clerk, a supervising plans examiner for community development. Again, that position would be fully cost-recovered within the development fees that we collect and allow us to have better control over our development review process. For Pinto Lake, we're including a park maintenance worker, one, and a recreation specialist because we are now taking over the operations from the concession. I'm happy to report I had a meeting with Anna Espinoza yesterday to talk about how that's been going. And just for this month, which is not fully closed out, we've already collected about $24,000 in revenue for the park, including the RV rentals, which is very exciting, and it already exceeds what the average had been, collection under the concession. So we are hopeful that that park operation will be sustainable and cover the cost of these additional positions. For the general fund under the cannabis funding, we already went through those positions. This provides you an overall breakdown for the general fund expenses by department. Again, this is something we highlighted at the last meeting, but I think it warrants, again, emphasizing that we've made significant progress with the hard work of our fire department and partnering with them on bringing the fire department overtime hours well within budget for this over the last couple of years, for 2016 in particular, and we look forward to continuing that trend for the next year. So with that positive news, we also have continued challenges with our PERS changes. I know we've spent quite a bit of time talking through this with the council. I know the council also attended a workshop with the League of California Cities a few weeks ago where the focus of it was on our CalPERS cost. So really, this is attributed to a number of things, but the change in the retirement formula to reduce the smoothing period from a rolling 30 years to a fixed 25 years, increase in longevity of our members, and the decrease of the discount rate, which is essentially what CalPERS expects on their return on investment. Many folks argue that it's artificially high, that they're expecting more investment returns to come in that are realistic. So CalPERS has been lowering that, and when they lower it, that means that cities like Watsonville and all over the state of California are having to contribute more to make up the difference. And it's really, in many communities, may be forcing some cities to even have to file bankruptcy because they can't cover the additional cost. This is another, just another way of looking at it. You can see the total cost as we look out to 2020-2021. You can see the significant increases over that period. Again, another way of looking at it, you can see this across all of our pension programs, from miscellaneous to fire and police, and you can see that we're entering into a period of some steep increases over that time. So between 2017 to 2021, you can see that our normal and our unfunded actual liabilities, which is our paying off all the debt that we lost during the recession, the total cost is going to go up from $6 million, where it's at today, up to $12 million in 2021. So that's an additional $6 million, basically doubling the amount we're paying into PERS today to keep our pension program sustainable for our members and our employees. I should also note that there's little to nothing we can do about these increases. These are increases that PERS rolls out, and we have to figure out a way to cover the cost. We are engaging at the state level with our legislators, elected officials, and the League of California Cities to work on solutions. But these are big numbers, and we're going to have to really spend some time on this over the next five years, working on solutions. So here's one last snapshot. This is the unfunded actuarial liability, so just paying off our old debt without our ongoing costs. This shows you what the increases are over that period of time, and again, it's essentially doubling over the next five years. So looking at our sales tax trends, you can see we've had incremental increases in sales tax over the last few years. That's positive news. The same is true for property tax. We've had incremental increases in that as well. And again, this is ranging from 2% to 3%, so it's good news, but they're not big numbers. For the general fund, you can see the revenue breakdown. Again, property and sales tax continue to be our largest revenue generators. We've talked about this during the last session. We do have signs of recovery and positive growth. Our general fund revenues are up $2 million over last year. We've had moderate growth in all of our property sales tax and departmental revenues. Increases in TOT, UUT, and Measure M revenues in the works. The Measure D and the statewide transportation gas tax increases are good news, and we continue to see residential and commercial development strong in the community. However, those are offset and balanced with a number of serious concerns that the council needs to consider. That includes what we were just talking about, increases in retirement costs, increases in healthcare costs, significant deferred facility, capital on parks and equipment needs. For those of you that haven't walked through our city hall building recently, I would encourage you to do so and look at the conditions of everything from the carpet to the furniture and the condition of many of our community buildings. It affects our ability to provide services to the community, and it's really reached a point that needs to be dealt with. We also mentioned this at the last meeting, but employee compensation, attraction, and retention will become an issue if we don't continue to work towards ways that we can work on maintaining pace with the market to what ability we can. And again, our goal is to retain and attract quality staff that can provide quality services to the community and that are passionate about serving the community. And so we need to continue looking at ways that we can keep pace with the market as our economy continues to recover. And then looking at ways that we can continue to adequately fund our reserves. So here's the general fund five-year projection. You can see that in 2019, we are projecting an operating deficit. That's when the majority of the pension costs really will hit us, and it's going to be something that we will continue to work with the council on and the community as we get closer to that timeframe. So looking at our enterprise funds, they are all in healthy positions. We continue to focus significant resources across all of our enterprise funds on capital and infrastructure investments. As far as the airport fund is concerned, our Airport Director, Rayvon Williams, has spent significant time trying to bring the airport into the black on its operating standpoint, looking at ways to bring the operations up to best practices and current standards, looking at ways to attract new businesses to the airport from an economic development standpoint. And that work has really resulted in the airport fund and operations being in a much more positive position. There are some staff increases proposed and included in the budget for the utility operations. All of these are really focused on trying to keep up with the demand for services across those operations. As the community grows, as we add housing, all of those programs have had additional impacts and have really been lean-staffed through the recession, and we're trying to catch up with those community needs. So other funds, we look at the gas tax. Again, the gas tax fund has increased with the transportation bill. The Measure G fund continues to be healthy. The library operational budget is balanced, and the insurance fund is balanced. There were some questions at the last public hearing about long-term debt activities, so here's a quick update on that. The successor agency refinancing resulted in overall savings of $3.8 million. City of Watsonville saved specifically $834,000 of that as part of that refinancing, so that's good news. The fire loan that we had was recently paid off. 2007 water revenue bonds, and this was in concert with PVWMA refinancing work, that $27 million debt has been removed. The 2009 sewer revenue bonds will be paid off or were paid off May of 2016, and the 2009 solid waste bonds will be paid off in fiscal year 2019. Many of those bonds were used for capital and infrastructure improvements, and so we're making good progress on paying those off. Again, Measure G is in good shape. We will be having conversations with the council and the community in the next couple of years about what the future of Measure G looks like. It obviously provides for critical public safety services in both fire and police. We'd like to see it continued, and so we will be working on that over the coming years. We talked about the voluntary time off program or the VTO program. This was developed during the recession as a way to collect some budget savings. It also gave an opportunity for staff to work less hours if they volunteered to do so, so we're proposing to continue that program. We've talked about the purchase orders earlier tonight, but we do have three blanket purchase orders that just allow us to operate more efficiently without having to constantly come back with new POs. These are companies that we work with on a regular basis. We need to in order to complete our work, and so these POs will just allow us to work more efficiently going forward. So looking forward, a few big focus areas or highlights for the next year include working with the council to update the strategic plan, continuing our focus on economic development, trying to grow our revenue base, and bringing new businesses, new jobs for the community, working on a downtown-specific plan. This is part of our ongoing downtown revitalization efforts. And then again, working on capital and infrastructure solutions. So with that, I will not read all the recommendations verbatim again, but you have those in front of you. And with that, if you have any questions, we are here, along with many of our apartment directors, to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. We'll move to questions from the city council. Mr. Dutra.
Thank you, Mayor. My first question is, I just blanked. I'll start with my second question. Are we concerned with the cannabis and hotel revenues that we've been kind of counting on? Are we concerned about, because the cannabis, we haven't been moving forward with. We've approved them a year ago. I think we only have one in operation. So are we anticipating this revenue over the next couple of years? Or, and with the hotels, we were thinking we're getting four. Now it looks like we're going to get two. So can you help? What's your thoughts?
Yes, and I appreciate that question, Councilmember Dutra. So we are still anticipating with some certainty that two of the hotels will be moving forward. And in fact, as part of that project, they've already broken ground, so we know it's happening. We have included some incremental adjustments for our TOT revenues as part of that, but we've been conservative because we know that a few of those hotels are question marks. The same is true for the cannabis revenues. So as the council knows, we've approved several cultivation permits. Those businesses have been working on getting up and running, but those revenues are not actually coming in, with the exception of one. And so we are cautiously optimistic about cannabis revenues. We've built in conservative estimates for the cultivation only, and then we'll have to wait and see what happens as the manufacturing comes up online. Those are revenues, we're trying not to, you know, count our chickens before they hatch.
Do you feel concerned with the, or I guess I have concern, so I'm just wondering if the city has the same concern, that do these people that went for the cannabis permits, were they just doing it to, you know, get one of the permits, one of the few permits we were handing out? Because to me, the fact that we're going over into well over a year, and we only have one in operation, something doesn't smell right.
Mayor, council, if I may. No, not at this time, not really concerned, because I do meet with them on a regular basis, as does Susie. Part of the issue here is that the buildings that a number of these individuals are going into to cultivate, cultivation, they are decades old, and they need to be re-engineered. They need new electronic circuits by PG&E put in, new design, architectural designs. It takes a long time. So a lot of these people that came forth and requested these permits, they're not developers, and they're not project managers. They are regular individuals that know the industry, so it's taking them a while. They are moving forward. I think everybody is moving forward. They're submitting their plans. They've got their architects online. It's just going to take them a little longer.
Can you give us an idea?
I believe we potentially have a second one coming online next month, and then we probably have two more by probably the end of October.
So we'll have four of the seven operating by the end of the year?
That is correct.
Do some of these people, is it the capitals? Is that the problem, that they didn't have the capital? They got themselves into something that they couldn't fix up? I'm just trying to figure it out, because we're talking numbers and promising money to the community and to our general fund, and we don't have the cannabis or potentially all four hotels operating.
To the best of my knowledge, it's not the capital. It is the time it takes to get your engineers, your architecture done, all of that. It takes time.
I would also just add that many of the warehouses and facilities that these folks are moving into are in pretty rough condition, and so they're not stepping into facilities that are ready for operation, and that takes time, too.
I mean, just my concern, it's been over a year, so. And then my second question is, do we have a depreciation fund for capital projects?
On our enterprise funds, they are depreciated within their funds, and for general government assets, they are depreciated, and we track them, and they're only shown in the annual financial statements.
Can you let us know what those numbers are? Because we sit here and we say that we, you know, we don't have any money for capital projects, but yet we have a fund that the money should be going towards these projects, right? So I'm just curious to see how much money we have in that fund.
Well, we really don't have the funds. The funds we budgeted, we actually budget the cost of the capital. So the only depreciation is for accounting purposes only. We don't have any funds to set aside a depreciation as a reserve fund. Yeah, it's just strictly accounting. We don't have, it would be nice to have a fund where we could set aside funds to rebuild capital, but at this point, we really don't have any funds set aside.
It's not a replacement fund, so we're depreciating the value of those assets going forward, but it's not a replenishment to replace those going forward.
Do other jurisdictions have depreciation funds where they pay into these funds and then they use them for capital projects?
Some lucky cities do. Not a lot, but yes.
Some do. It's not that common for buildings, for example, because you'd be sitting on a lot of cash for some of your larger buildings, locking up a lot of your cash for some of your larger buildings. But some cities that are in stronger financial positions will do that for other capital projects.
So basically, we don't have a depreciation fund. We just take the depreciation off the buildings?
Mayor, council, if I may. So under GASB 34 and under Governor accountable standards, we are required to depreciate everything we purchase, whether it's the building, whether it's a vehicle. There are certain standards that we have to abide by. As far as what you are referring to, Councilmember Dutra, we do not have an indirect cost allocation fund that sets aside X percent of money from every department budget to buy vehicles or to set aside to buy computers. We do not have that. And this city has not had that in many a decade. Some cities do that are in better financial shape, but we have not had the revenue or the resources to do that.
One program we have recently brought back is a replacement program for our IT infrastructure. So that is an allocation plan now that all of the departments, including the enterprise funds, contribute towards, and we use that for replacing servers, replacing computers that had been frozen during the recession, and we just brought that back for this budget.
Well, I know that this is something that's been brought to me by people in the community saying, "We complain that we don't have money for capital projects, but we have a depreciation fund that's for that specifically." So to be clear to the people in the community, we do not have a, you're telling me we do not have a depreciation fund that has money in it to fix capital projects or for capital projects, but we do, we take off the depreciation off of buildings and stuff?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
More questions? Ms. Garcia.
I have three questions. My first question actually is a follow-up question from our communication a few days after our last meeting. And I had originally asked you if I could locate the $100,000 spent on the rebranding of Watsonville, which included updating our website. The response was that there was no The response was that there was no single line item because it was allocated across several departments with utilities picking up the majority. I then asked the question, how was the cost listed in the budget so I could see how much each department contributed, and I didn't receive a response. And so I would still like to know, how can I go to all the different departments to see how much they contributed towards the rebranding of Watsonville?
Mayor, council, Councilmember Garcia, what we can do is we can get you an accounting list, a breakout of how those costs were indirectly allocated each of the departments.
If I could have that, thank you very much. My second question is, although it's not in the long list that you said of all the resolutions and ordinance and stuff, but in the online packet we got, I see a resolution for budget set aside housing. Is that not included? I mean, it's not included in here, but it's included in our online packet, and so I wondered what happened to that.
In the presentation?
No, you know, on our, on our iPad, we have a resolution called Budget Set Aside Housing two thousand and seventeen Resolution. And I'll read it. "A resolution of the City Council of the City of Watsonville in its capacity as a successor to the housing assets and functions of the former redevelopment agency of the City of Watsonville, finding that the use of funds from the Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund for planning and general administrative costs is necessary for the purpose of producing, improving, and preserving the community supply of low and moderate income housing." That's what we received. And so I wondered, is it not, but it wasn't on the list that you gave, you gave us. And so I wondered, is it on or not?
I have it in front of us on our list as well. The intent is for it to be included.
So it is, okay. So then I have a question about it.
Okay.
Okay. My question is, let me get to it. It says in section one, and then now therefore, it says that it will pay for planning, the funds will pay for planning and administrative expenses is necessary for the production improvement or preservation of low and moderate income housing. So my question is, what percentage of these funds are used for planning and administrative expenses?
Give us one second, Councilmember Garcia, the turn of that.
Okay.
Yes, it's roughly about ninety thousand dollars of staff time with the budget of about seven hundred thousand.
And what percentage is that? That seems like a low percentage.
Fifteen, yeah, it's about fifteen percent, just ballparking.
Fifteen percent? Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you. When we go back and take a look at the reserves we put together, the twenty percent, how many months would that actually survive us, survive us on the city? Is that like three months' worth of expenditures?
It's just shy of three months. I believe it's about two point eight.
Okay, so it's two point eight. So even if that money were to be moved or we didn't put it in reserves, it's not really carrying a whole lot of weight for what we can actually get from it in terms of our rainy day reserves of some sort. What would be your recommendation from twenty percent to what we should be going with?
Mayor, council, if I may. Being a finance director for eighteen years, the standard for Government Finance Officers' Association is three months. That is a standard. There are some cities that actually carry five at a minimum, especially after the downturn of two thousand and seven, because they expect it to occur again in the next three years. So I would say a minimum three months, and if we can later, up that another month.
So if we start to see some things, maybe in the next fiscal year, we can see building that up maybe to about twenty-five percent, is that about roughly?
And it was our, and it was our thought as part of the council workshop when we talk about strategic plan, we could talk about some of these other policies as well.
No, we know that we're dealing with a CalPERS hit that's just going to double on us. If we don't hear from the state of what we need to do, and we have this bill that comes in the mail, what alternatives, what are we discussing? What are we looking at as some sort of strategic plan, option, idea? I mean, it means layoffs. It means, it means other things that are going to have to be drastic measures, but what are we talking about that will have to come up in terms of that dialogue?
We're doing some incremental things. For example, pre-funding the UAL, the unfunded actuarial liability payment we have to make. By doing that in advance, we save.
Oh, roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
In interest, which is the difference of making that in terms of monthly payments. So that's, you know, if you look at the total six million dollar number, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, it's still a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but it's not solving the issue. And frankly, I think the solutions to it are really going to be found at a state level. They've been exploring lowering the percentage funded for the pools. Right now, their target is a hundred percent funded. There's been discussions about lowering that to eighty percent to try to, to try to relieve some of the pressure. And so we have been engaged in those conversations. We will continue to lobby our representatives. We will continue to participate in the league's conversations as well, because we're not the only city struggling with this. It's a statewide problem.
So if we went from one hundred to eighty, and instead of us going double, how much more would we be seeing for that as an adjustment for that eighty percent goal instead of a hundred percent goal?
Mayor, council, councilmember, if I may. So a couple of little fact toys that are out there. I was reading last week that the discount rate came back from the interest earned from CalPERS was point eight percent. Okay? It is approximately sixty-two percent funded. Okay? If you look on our budget, seventy-five percent is made up of police and fire, another ten percent parks and recreation. So if you look at that, and I don't want to be the bad news, but you look at it, we have Measure G out there, which is approximately three point eight million, and that's coming. We have to figure out if we go back to the voters. So you look at six million dollars in CalPERS unfunded, you look at three point eight million dollars of Measure G that we have to figure out if we don't extend that. And you're also, you can't figure the discount rate because the state keeps moving the target. So we don't know. So if all these came to pass, and if we can't do our job and bring more commercial and retail and figure out some of these solutions, then it's going to have to come down to reduction in core service levels throughout the community in one form or another. There's just, we can't make up a ten million dollar number in three, four years. There's no way.
Now, I think at one point, the bond service that we have is incrementally low. We're really conservative on what debt we're paying from what we could potentially take out. Has there been discussion about us taking bond or going with bonds to cover some of the capital improvement that we don't have the funding for?
Mayor, council, we have been looking into that. Right now, it's, again, another moving target because, one, they're going to look at our fund balance rate, they're going to look at our credit rating, they're going to look at our extended long-term liabilities. And so we're kind of working with some, with a company right now to try and figure out all these pieces to see what credit rate we can get and if we're bondable. And I don't have that answer for you.
So we're going after the rating right now, and then at that point, that'll give us an idea of what type of options we might have to consider on something like that?
Right, and what, and what range of debt the city could really afford from a, from a cash flow standpoint.
And I do hear that we do have a third hotel that's finally coming back on track, and that is our Hilton eighty room over on Southern. And I believe that, seeing some plans coming in the next week or two to the city, so that I've heard from the source on that. So there might be a little bit more progress for some shovel-to-work projects. I know we haven't really talked about Korea in this. I don't know if we're going to see any money that's going to come from the Korea resources to sort of help with any of this. But obviously, I think all of our community, whether it's the employees that are here, whether it's our community, all of us are needing to come together and think about what the big picture is for the city on what we can do and how we can work together. And I know that it's impacting everybody, giving raises and then not having the money to cover that in a year or two's time with these other things coming forward are serious matters for all of us to be looking over and making some pretty big decisions over. So I appreciate all of the work and effort you're putting into this, and I will continue to raise these as concerns with covering what we have for the capital improvement, because if you don't take care of it now, it's going to be a concern later. Our CalPERS hit, what are budgets going to look like overall for all of these unforeseen expectations and programs that are likely to sunset out if we don't really figure out what we're going to do for the bigger picture for the future?
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Hertz?
While we're still on the retirement question, all these retirement costs, you know, how is this going to help ensure a secure retirement for our workforce?
Well, we have to keep making the payments. That's number one. And, you know, part of this, we haven't talked about this specifically, but the new tier, the Pepper tier, that was put in place at the state level, is a more sustainable tier than some of the classic tiers that we have in place as well. And as we're hiring new staff and new officers, they're coming in, in the Peppera tier, and so that helps as well overall. But again, this is, it is a major concern. They're, they're big numbers to have to, to have to cover. Our goal is to maintain a retirement system for our employees, not just today, but for the long term. So for now, we're tasked with finding a way to make the payment.
Well, I think that's a real challenge, because, you know, the employees, they, they want to get paid today, but they would also like to get paid into their retirement. And that's, you know, you got to live for today, but you got to plan for the future as well. And that's a tough one when we're up against difficult situations. If we could go to that slide that you had up there with the Watsonville versus comparable cities for just a moment, I think that's kind of a big-picture slide that we all need to, the public needs to see at least. What are these other cities in this comparison group doing differently or better, or what's their, why is their situation significantly, some of them at least, some, some of them significantly different than our situation?
There's a lot of variables that contribute to that, but using a couple of examples, City of Santa Cruz has a much larger sales tax base than Watsonville does. It serves as a tourism destination, has a high TOT base with quite a few hotels. And so with that, they, their budget is almost twice that of Watsonville's with about the same-sized population that they serve, as an example. Morgan Hill has benefited from the tech boom, and that community, you know, I was talking with the city manager this morning that they have a new residential development with the average price of the home going for nine hundred thousand dollars.
It's the Los Gatos of over the hill.
Los Gatos is the same way. And so those communities, again, have higher income distribution in those communities, higher retail sales tax base than Watsonville does. And with those additional revenues, you have the ability to build your fund balance to thirty-five or even fifty-four percent, and that's, those are some of the differences.
Well, I think that's something the, the public needs to think about when they make their sales, when they go make their purchases, where are they buying their, their home goods and their taxable items? And, you know, the property tax is somewhat a function of geography and the other factors that enter into that, and some of that we don't have, well, most of that we don't have control over. You have any suggestions as to what we could do to be more fiscally endowed in that department?
Well, Watsonville has a diverse economy, which is good news, and as part of that, we've been working hard across community development and city manager's office and airport. Another example of trying to attract more businesses into town and retain the good ones that we have. The Nordic Naturals expansion is another good example of a large employer and company in town that's staying here and expanding. The new hotels are great news, but we really need to continue working on getting the message out there about Watsonville, about our low crime rates, about the opportunities you have to grow businesses here, and continue working towards growing our sales tax base is one of the ways.
Mayor, council, I think it's a number of those, those issues you brought up, Mr. Hertz. It is concerning, because what we need to continue to do is diversify our revenue streams. We are far too dependent on sales tax. I think it was a good step this last year with the passage of three tax measures between the utility users' tax, the TOT increase, and the Measure M. I think we still need to continue to find those little pieces to continue to diversify our revenue streams. But as Mr. Huffaker said, we have to find a way, when we have the strawberry festival here, and we have the birding festival here, and we have a number of these jewels that we have in our community, at the end of the event, they go there. They go to Santa Cruz, they go to Monterey. They don't stay here, they don't spend their money here, and that is a big problem. We didn't have the hotel stock, we don't have a number of places that they would want to go see, and then again, we haven't been getting the message out there. And that's part of the problem. We need to get people to stay here longer within the community and spend more, and that is the only way it's going to work.
You spell such?
Can you pull up, I think, I don't know if it's page twenty-three, but the one that added positions? Now, the funding for those positions is coming from where?
So walking through these, the point five office assistant for the city clerk's office, part of those costs are being shared from our enterprise operations as well. The city clerk's office serves the entire organization, and so those costs are being distributed across several departments as part of that administrative role.
What's the purpose of the role?
I can ask the city clerk to speak to that?
We used to have an administrative assistant before the recession, and then that got cut to half, and then got cut to one-third. And right now, we were sharing that position with Adeseli in the city manager's office and human resources, and human resources is taking Adeseli now. So we're hiring a half-time to, that person does all of our scanning, filing. He's, she actually supports our staff in doing all the administrative work. And right now, we're, all the insurances that come in, all contracts in our.
So currently, how many people are in that area, the city clerk's area?
The city clerk, so it's Erwin, myself, Roxanna works for the city attorney. She does all the resolutions and ordinances. I'm the supervisor, but she mainly does city attorney, and she has been helping the city clerk's office because we don't have staff.
What's the next one, the supervising plans? That's just an increase that we're having?
So the community development department for many years has been contracting at our plan check review to an outside company, CSG is the name of the company. Those contract services are covered by development fees we charge for applications that come in. And so what we're proposing to do is to hire an in-house person to do that work. It gives us more control over moving projects faster and more, more control over the quality of the product as well.
Will it also cut expenses?
And that, and so as part of that, we will be incrementally reducing our contract with CSG, and the development fees that we're collecting will cover the cost of that position.
Okay.
For Pinto Lake, the park maintenance worker one and recreation specialist I mentioned earlier tonight, that was part of our decision to take over the operations of the park after the passing of the concession operator there.
And so we get funding from Pinto Lake to maintain that position, too?
We collect revenues from the park, and we're hopeful that those revenues, and so far, they've been coming in strong, will be sufficient to cover the cost of those positions for the Pinto Lake operation.
And the rest of these positions are all cannabis?
The rest of these are all, are all cannabis, correct?
And then I think that people need to know about the, I don't know what we call it, city utilities rate increase comes July one, correct? And how much is that?
I can ask Steve Palmasano to respond to that. We had to bring him up at some point.
To deliver the news.
Well, July first is almost here. That's, you know, I think, Saturday, and people are going to say, hey, what's this with my bill? Well, they won't say it this month, but soon. Well, they won't say it this month, but soon.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. In 2015, your council approved a five-year rate increase, and that is to address a number of significant infrastructure projects that this city is undertaking, mainly replacing our water lines, our sewer lines, closing our landfill, buying new garbage trucks, all sorts of projects. So the rate increases that were approved were about $4 a month increase for sewer, $4 a month increase for solid waste, and about $5 to $6 a month increase for the water. And that will continue forward each year for the next three more years.
But this, but come July 1, it's not all of that amount, is it? Or is it?
Yes.
So it's $13, is what you're saying?
About $13, yeah.
Just want residents to be prepared when they see their bills, $13. Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any other questions?
Well, just that in this budget, again, the third fire station or the paramedic station or whatever it is, the city manager and I have been talking about that, and I want people to know that in District 6 and 7, that it is not a forgotten plan, and we're working on it.
Okay. I had a question in, between the enterprise, the enterprises that we have and the general budget, what are the restrictions on each?
Mayor Council, basically, each enterprise, whether it's water, wastewater, or it's airport, the revenues generated within that enterprise fund must stay with the enterprise fund, cannot be used for any other purpose unless they're indirect costed out for purposes of finance, for payroll, and human resources, those type of things. But those revenues must stay within that enterprise.
And in the general fund?
The general fund, those revenues can be used for any purpose deemed by City Council.
And most of them, right now, the most percentage goes to?
Police, fire, and community services.
Thank you very much. Here's Mr. Dutra.
Yeah, last question. I just, we were talking, I've been listening to everybody speak up here, and I kind of, I'm concerned and wondering if you guys should be concerned as well, to be hiring anybody new if we're having a hard time even giving raises to the people that actually work here now. So...
So I appreciate that question, Councilmember Dutra, and I know we've had conversations about this. Really, the focus of those additional positions are in areas where we've been very lean-staffed, and we're trying to respond to increase in demand for services. We've, as an organization, have been frozen for many years without making any adjustments, and that's not sustainable on the, in the long term. And it leads to employees being burnt out with more work than they can get done. And so it is a balance. As part of that, as we were just discussing with the, with the general fund positions, many of those, our aim was to ensure that they were cost-recovered. And under the cannabis funds, based on direction from the council of looking for ways we could do service enhancements, putting investments in the Police Activities League, for example, we wanted to ensure that we were able to offer some additional services to the public, and with that, those positions were reflected there. The cannabis operation, again, as an example, as the industry gets up and going, that requires additional code enforcement, monitoring by both the police, the fire department and the Community Development Department. And so those staffing positions were required as that program moves forward, because there just weren't staff to absorb that additional work. So, in short, we're doing so incrementally and thoughtfully, recognizing that there are pension implications that come with that. And we will need to continue doing that going forward as well. And we do need to be thoughtful and careful about what positions are being added and what long-term impact that might have.
And Mayor Council, if I may add to that, the cannabis revenues were stipulated by the voters and approved on how those would be used. We have not included the full-born rate for those, because we are concerned, because we only have one unit open right now. And in two, three more months, we'll be looking at the manufacturing piece. But if you fast, if you go forward a year, we'll probably be here in a year, and we won't have one open yet. So it's going to seriously take some time there. As far as the community development positions, those positions are paid for by growth. They are paid for by the developers. And about a year and a half ago, it was taking two weeks to a month to get a project out of there, and developers and builders did not want to work with the city. So having these new positions paid by them directly speeds up the process, so people will come to the city and develop. Otherwise, they won't.
Yes.
It looks like all of the positions are pretty much self-sustaining, based on funding. Are they temporary positions, so that if there are layoffs, that these would, you know, last hired, first fired type thing? Is that where they are or not?
Mayor Council, what we've done is we've identified those positions. And in talking through this with the departments and staff, one of the requirements was, if it is not cost-recovered, if it's not a revenue match for an expenditure match, or it's not driven directly by growth and can't pay for itself, then we're not looking at adding positions, just to add positions. So these positions, within the budget, you'll see that they are identified as revenue-driven positions. And we've tried to do that to identify them, because the growth needs to pay for growth. The general fund cannot fully bear the entire rate of these positions if the economy goes south. We will have to do something with them.
Okay, I would suggest we go to a public hearing, and we'll come back to City Council discussion. Okay, this is a public hearing, and we'd like, the public, they would like to address us. Please come forward.
Good evening, sorry.
Good evening.
My name's Olivia Martinez. I'm the SEIU rep for the Technical Bargaining Unit. Sorry, my voice just... So I find this presentation very interesting, especially some of the comments that the assistant manager has made, especially the one that he talks about, concern about employees being burned out. And that being the excuse of hiring more positions. You know, you have 121 managers' positions. That should tell you that there isn't a lot of concern as to whether staff will be burned out or not. You really need to think about how many manager positions you have in the impact to your budget, right? Versus really investing in line staff. Line staff provides services to the community directly. And when you're not investing in them, you are not investing in the community. He really pushed the whole agenda around the pension. The whole discount rate has been known since 2016. If this is such a big concern, there should have been a very strategic approach around this, especially with the rebranding of the city and asking the city workers if there was a need to rebrand. I hear this theme about saving money, but still, these decisions around certain spending and not thinking about line staff contradict themselves. I hear about health insurances going up. However, there is unwillingness for SEIU staff to be part of the Health Committee, and I hear from people that are part of the Health Committee that those meetings are not happening every month. If they're not happening, where is the serious concerns about really thinking about health insurance and the costs that our members have to bear, which is a 12% cost versus the 5% that management has to give? That's a huge difference to our members, right? If I hear about this cost savings and wanting to save money, I hear that Mr. Montoya just spent $2,000 in his office furniture. This is a contradiction. You have no money, but there's no cost savings, and you continue to balance the budget on workers, right? I wish Ms. Coffin would have met with us, so we could have told her the stories of our members, right? Instead of also pushing this pension agenda. Our members have sacrificed for the last 10 years, and they continue to sacrifice. And still, you want to balance the budget on our members. It is time to make our members whole. Our members are out of market 34% in some classifications. This is not okay. This needs to change, and we're asking for the thoughtful leadership of this council to make this change and hold this leadership accountable from making these kind of spendings if they don't have any money. This is not acceptable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else in the audience?
Mayor and City Council, Christine McGrath, again. I've worked for the city for 25 years. One question that you should be asking is, what percentage of the SEIU employees are funded through the general fund? Most of the women that work in our department are part of the Public Works Department. Therefore, their salaries are funded through the enterprise. Is that correct? Yes. Another issue, we had a part-time employee in our department, Araceli. Where did she go? Upstairs. What for? Cover for maternity leave. Now, she's upstairs, still working. The personal maternity leave has returned. There have been many positions that have been filled upstairs. You need, if you decide to balance the budget on our backs, there's only one thing that I would like you to do, and I beg you to do. Pay attention to how many promotions are made at the top through the life of our contract. Find out how many positions are filled there. Find out how many people are promoted there and how many pay increases they get. Please do that. If you think that we should bear the burden again, I don't have, I didn't have, we didn't have a problem with it for 10 years. But during that period of time, if you see a lot of people that are being promoted in certain positions, it really does not sit well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Cynthia Pintor, and I'm one of the code enforcement officers for the City of Watsonville. I've been here since 2008, kind of, because in 2015, I was laid off. I was laid off after agreeing with my coworkers to give a 10% pay cut for seven years. And when the market started coming up, I was given a layoff notice by my director at the time, Rosella Tavantis, and was told that this was a choice that council made to cut my position. It was very demoralizing, what I went through. I was able to come back when one of my fellow coworkers left to another jurisdiction. And so now I'm back, and I'm just asking you guys to help us get what we deserve after so much we gave up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ms. Charles.
Can you please use some mic, please?
Mayor.
Thank you.
Council. We're here...
Tell us your name, please.
I'm sorry. My name is Lucy Karina Murillo.
Thank you.
I'm a resident, a city employer, and I represent SEIU employees for the City of Watsonville. I'm one of the negotiators. You know, nine years ago, we did this, and we gave. Some of you were here. You were here. We gave. And we did it because we love this city. We love it. We spend our money here. We shop here. I see a lot of good things happening. I see what you guys are doing, and I appreciate it. But when you, when you come to a table and you say, this is all we can give you, yet you're spending money on other stuff, like hiring a part-time to do, I don't know what. We can do that easily. You can hire from our members easily. When you say you don't have money, yet you're spending it in furniture. That's disappointing. I'm sorry. Very disappointing. We have given a lot enough. We're here to ask you, make us whole. Give us, we're not asking for, to pay us back what we gave. We're, we want to move forward. We want to work together with you guys. Make us whole.
You can finish.
And we will work with you guys. You guys got to work with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Michael Moore, Business Representative, Operating Engineers Local 3. A great man once said, "Truth crushed to the earth shall rise again." I don't know if you know who that great man is, so that's your homework assignment. People have come up and said, look, make us whole. We've made sacrifices. Look at all the things that's going on. It's always about dignity and respect. If you respect your workforce, you do it right by them. If you don't respect them, you continue down the same vein you're going now. I implore you to please do the right thing by the people who keep your city afloat. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Have them line up.
Lo voy a hacer en español. Buenas noches a todos ustedes, concejal, mayor. A todos ustedes al ser manager. Soy Daniel Rocha. Trabajo en el departamento de basura. He estado aquí ya por 28 años. 28 años de trabajo, de sacrificio. Mayormente, en nuestro departamento, en estos últimos años, cuanta más basura nos dieron para levantar. Cuánto dinero más nos dieron por levantar más tonelaje de basura. Nos sacrificamos por ocho a diez años. Estamos aquí aún soportando esta tormenta que se ve que no termina. Encarecidamente, a todos ustedes les pedemos apoyo. Hemos sufrido bastante, que aún no tenemos el costo de vida al que está corriente. Entonces, les pido su apoyo a ustedes, ya que ustedes han apoyado a otras agencias. Y a nosotros, que ha pasado con ustedes. Así que, por ocho años, o estos diez años que tenemos, no es justo que, que nos vean con dignidad. Que nosotros, que levantamos la basura con olores, con gustarnos, con todo lo que sea. Nosotros, que estamos recibiendo todo eso en nuestros cuerpos. Cuando vamos a tirar la basura en el dompe, Óscar, tenemos muchos años conociéndonos. Y yo anteriormente les pedía no se lo apoyo a ustedes cuando estaba el señor Campos. El departamento de basura es el que ha sufrido más en todos estos años, señores. Estos años han sido de sacrificio para todos nosotros. El sacrificio que lo hemos dado, lo hemos dado con amor, con respeto a la ciudad, a las personas que pagan el servicio de nosotros. Cuánto desde el tiempo que empezamos los four locks hasta ahorita, cuánto ha subido la basura, cuánto ha cedido el agua, y cuánto nos han pagado más a nosotros. Así que les pido que por favor miren todo esto antes de hacer otra cosa. Gracias.
Where's our interpreter?
I can, she's off. I can go ahead and, I took some notes. My name is Daniel Rocha. I have been with the city for 28 years. And I'm asking how much more garbage we have picked up, and how much more money has the city received for the additional garbage? We have endured eight years of the storms. I ask all of you to support us. We don't even have the cost of living. I ask you for your support, since you have supported other agencies. For more than eight or 10 years... For more than eight or 10 years, we have been sacrificing. Isn't it fair that you see us with dignity? Us who pick up the garbage with dirt and worms, with lots of smells. Oscar, we have known each other for a long time, and we have talked. In these years, the solid waste department has been one of the ones that have sacrificed the most. How much has the garbage and water rates have increased? And how much have we, how much raises have, have we received?
Thank you very much. Okay? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, then we'll bring it back to council for further discussion and deliberation. Ms. Garcia.
Yes, the point about management was brought up, and in my conversation in researching that, we were informed that between management and mid-management, there's 112 employees. Of these 112 employees, 42 do not supervise. Of these 42 employees, 25 are mid-management that do not supervise. My question is, what makes these managers, a manager at a higher salary when they don't supervise?
Mayor, counsel, part of it is, in prior years, a lot of those classifications were negotiated in the MOUs with unions. So those classifications fall in those categories. So a number of those promotions in prior years happened from the lower ranks into a classification that made them fall into mid-management. And that was what my understanding is, when we can ask the deputy city manager to follow-up.
We also have positions within both the mid-management and management that may be responsible for, for managing different projects or programs. It's typical that these positions, like administrative analyst, for example, or admin analyst, fall within the management units. That's typical of, of cities all over California. That, that does not always mean that they are supervising staff. One of the points I had made with council, and I believe council member Garcia, you and I had talked about this as well, is that within that total number, a number of our mid-managers and managers, because we're a lean organization, wear many hats. I kind of look at them as being hybrid positions because they're doing a variety of, of different work. I think sometimes there's a misconception that the managers are, are sitting back in an office. But as part of that, we're, we are a lean operation, we're a lean organization, and many of those positions within those classifications are doing, doing a, a variety of work.
Mr. Dutra.
Thank you. This is kind of a lot for everybody tonight, and I want to thank, thank you, everybody who came up and spoke. We appreciate it. The reason why we were late 15 minutes is because we were, this council, we're fighting for all of you guys. And the problem that we have here is this thing called the Me Too clause. So even if we want to, if we want to even give you more, that means we have to give everybody more. And that's what we were all, we've all been really upset about, because we are here fighting for you guys, and just to be told something that, "Well, if you give it to them, you have to give it to everybody." And I, and I, I don't know how that got into everyone's contracts, that, you know, if we give to, if we give SEIU or OE, OE3 raises higher than someone else, that everyone else has to get it as well.
Please, 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 this is not a response back and forth, okay? Please.
So, that's why we were, we were here late, because we were, we're, we're here trying to, we know, you guys, you guys aren't even getting the salary that you guys deserve. You're not even at the level of other, of other positions. And so how do we make that right? I personally have a hard time hearing, "We're going to hit a fiscal cliff, we're going to hit, hit a fiscal cliff, and yet we're going to hire more positions." That, to me, is a problem. And I, I don't want to go into something and say, "Okay, well, you know, we, we can't give these people a raise, but we're going to hire some positions." And I get the, the cannabis tax, because I understand that's directly for that, those positions. I understand that part. But I just think it's about timing, you know? And then to spend the, the, the amount of money on the logo, the rebranding, at the time that we did, when, when we have our employees who haven't been, seen a raise in a long time, a long time. And that's, to me, that, that, I have a, I have a problem with that. And people, we sit here and we say, you know, this Me Too clause, it's equality for everybody, it's equality for everybody, but you know what? Sometimes equality is not the word we need to be looking for. We need the word equity. And equity is what we should be looking for, forward to. And we look at the situation that some of our line workers are in, and they're way behind the salary that they, that they deserve. So I have a, I have a really hard time with this budget. I really do. And I, I honestly, I don't even know if I can approve it tonight, because of, I, I just feel that we, we need to, we really need to consider the decisions we make when we put things in there, and how it's going to affect other people. Because I know, I respect you guys. I thank you. You are on the line every single day. The people see you. We appreciate you. And we need to, as a council and as a, and as management, we need to show you guys more appreciation. And, and, and so we got to figure something out. So that's kind of where I am, and I'm thinking, so I just kind of wanted to, to let it be known, is that, you know, I, this is a really, this is a hard decision for me, because of, you know, kind of the decisions we're making that kind of don't, don't reflect well on our line staff, so.
Thank you. Let's remember, when we run for these positions, we know that it's hard decisions that we have to make.
Right.
And that we represent our employees, but we also look for the whole city, too. Yes, Ms. Commissary.
The question or comment that comes up is, I know that you're going to be doing an evaluation, or that's part of the process that will take place during the course of the negotiations. And can you describe that a little bit more, so the public is aware of what that would be? And then at that point, what kind of results might come out of that, or what discussion takes place, once the results do come back, about evaluating positions and, and the wages and what's comparable?
Sure. So this is something that we've talked about at many of the, many of the tables with, with all the various bargaining groups, including SEIU and OE3. And I brought it up earlier, as part of the budget presentation as well, that as we work towards wanting to retain the great staff that we have, who we all have big respect for, and know have sacrificed significant, significantly over the last 10 years, is looking at ensuring that our compensation is keeping pace in the market, so that we can continue to remain competitive with other cities that are trying to also attract quality, quality employees and, and quality staff. So as part of that, what, what we've agreed to do is to do a comprehensive market study across all of our operations over the next 18 months, to look at those market inequities. And then as part of that, working with all of the, with all of the groups, look at options and solutions for, for trying to solve for that. And I highlighted it during the budget, because we acknowledge that it's a concern. We know that if it's not dealt with, it could continue to grow into a, a bigger issue. And we want to also ensure that our employees are being compensated fairly and competitively with the market. Now, having said all of that, it also has to be done within the city's ability, the city's financial ability to, to solve for. And so, that, those will be decisions that the council will have to work through, as we look at trying to solve for pension costs, for capital needs. But compensation for, for our employees should be right up there as part of those conversations.
Mr. Hernandez.
So, you know, I've, this is actually probably the second time that we've, I've sat through this process, and I think that, you know, a lot of things have been told to me before, you know, it was, now is the pension, before, you know, we were doing Measure G, and, you know, they're saying that we can get some money, because we take some money for public safety, that we would have extra money for line staff. And, you know, it didn't, things didn't turn out the way that they do two years later, four years later. And the same thing, you know, when I, I put tons of hours into the, the passing of the cannabis ordinance, you know, organizing behind the scenes. And part of my motivation was so that we can, you know, move ahead with, move line staff ahead. That's, you know, the SEIU units and OE3 units. And I think that we've been short-sighted, in whenever we do run across some revenue stream, and automatically spending it without sometimes notifying the council what it's going to be spent on. But we need to, you know, we didn't, we need to make sure that we keep in mind our lowest paid workers that we have in the city. I'm definitely, you know, disappointed that we're in this situation, and I think that we're going to have to figure out something, because, you know, I'd like to see some sort of win-win resolution for this. I don't know if it means a hiring freeze. I don't know if it means doing a market, you know, market pay study now, prior to the negotiations, and waiting it out. Or, you know, I, I'd love to see that, the market, the, the study, pay study has to happen for sure, though. And when it does happen, I would like to make sure that we do have some sort of way that we look at equity, and make sure that we pay the lowest paid in comparison to the other cities, the workers that are paid the lowest. We do got to address that. As a city, it's the right thing to do, I think. But in, but for now, I think we do have to come to some sort of resolution. And I'm not even entirely sure what that would mean, if it would mean, you know, waiting it out and negotiating after this study, or some sort of hiring freeze. But I would like to have both parties, you know, present in, in coming up with that resolution.
Ms. Garcia.
Councilman Dutra brought up in conversation we were having in closed session about the Me Too. I'd like to ask you to publicly tell us, tell everybody what you told us in terms of what it would mean in terms of the Me Too, in terms of deficit that the city would encounter.
Councilmember Garcia, it's okay if you want to ask the question now, but it would be improper to ask the, the staff to repeat what was told to you in closed session.
Okay, so my question is, in terms of a deficit incurred because of the Me Too, what would that look like?
So we ran for our five-year projection, just for example sake for the council, a 3% in year one and a 3% in year two, to show what the budget would look like over the next five years, including the additional pension costs that would come in and hit during that time. Based on that projection, in 2020, we'd have an operating deficit of essentially $600,000. And by 2021, that number would grow to $1 million annually in operating deficit. That number also does not include or assume any dollars towards capital investments that would remain zero. And again, that's another area that we need to solve for, but for the projection, we didn't include any capital investment.
Other questions?
I had one question. When we heard the worker from the waste, waste management, the waste, and he raised the issue that in the garbage collection, you know, we're going to, we've been seeing increases in the garbage in the whole system there, and it's going to even go higher, but they haven't gotten a fair share of that. Okay? There's, I know that this unit has a variation from different departments. So how do we compensate in terms of the enterprise, the private, the enterprise to compensate the workforce that he has on that enterprise?
So Director Palmasano can add some detail to this as well, but a number of the rate increases that were built in, that are now taking effect, we're really focused at all of our deferred infrastructure, capital, and equipment needs. And so the majority, lion's share of the additional revenues collected from those rate increases have gone towards replacing water pipe, replacing dump trucks, you know, doing facility upgrades, and trying to catch back up on our significant deferred and aging infrastructure.
How about, how about, how about the wages of workers?
And so I'll ask, I'll ask Steve to come up and comment on that, but as we're coming out of the recession, and, and looking at trying to control compensation and, and salary costs across all of our departments during that period in time, that those additional revenues have not gone directly to, to wage increases.
And if I may add to that, Mayor, Council, part of the rate increases were due to, we had to do a study under state law in order to bring that forward, in order to increase those rates, and those rates are primarily justified by the capital infrastructure replacement.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, then.
Can you put the slide back up about the positions?
Which one do you like to see?
Positions.
The positions?
For the general fund?
Your question, Ms. Pelicich?
Well, just looking at this, it looks like, and I could be totally wrong, but it looks like all the positions, except one, are revenue-generated.
Mayor, Council, that is correct. And that's the .5. And the .5 is spread amongst the majority of the departments, with, with most of that coming out of public works and utilities for their, their agenda, because the majority of the agenda items are public works.
And if I may, this position was already authorized in our previous budget. We had a third, and Public Works was paying nine hours. However, because human resources and city manager need more support, we were only getting two and a half hours. So we already had that position in the budget, but we were not filling it since, I believe, last year's budget.
Yeah, it's been about a year and a half.
Okay, other questions? Ms. Commissary.
What kind of cost savings might be available as a result of, like, the CFO that we don't have hired currently, and any other positions that we had budgeted for but are not currently being filled?
Mayor, Council, so currently, we have two vacancies, the community development director and the administrative services director that have been advertised several times. So those savings will be fun balanced, because they're one-time, but we do plan on hiring those. I don't think we can keep dumping all the work on, on Mr., with Bill here. I don't think it's fair, and I think that staff is pushed to the limit right now. Matt has jumped in. I, on the other hand, have jumped in to help out community development, because they've been considerably busy, and we have so many projects going on right now, we're just trying to cap, keep track of them. So if we look at, this budget is ending June 30th. The prob, the savings you probably had is probably 60, 70, 80,000 from the last six months. We plan on hiring somebody in both those positions, hopefully in the next 30 to 45 days. We have to, because we are in a bind right now in both departments.
Yes, Mr. Dutra.
What happens if the budget isn't passed tonight?
Charter requires the council pass a budget.
By when?
By, uh, June 30th.
I mean, I don't feel, I, I don't feel that it would be appropriate for me to vote on yes on this budget, when there are clearly issues with it that are, I find disrespectful to our line workers, and that I feel like need to be addressed, like hiring positions that are going to be creating more, that are going to be creating more pension, that we're going to have to continue to pay into. And especially since we're sitting here talking about a fiscal cliff in a few years. So I, I feel very uncomfortable. I, I, the rest of the budget, I'm okay with, for the most part, but for the, the increasing in staff, hiring staff, when we're here, we can't even give them a raise. I, I just, it's really, it's difficult to, to vote yes on this.
Mayor, Council, Councilmember Dutra, I do appreciate you saying that. However, I will say that all these items, with the exception of one, are all revenue-driven. However, I will say that all these items, with the exception of one, are all revenue-driven, which means you will shut down Pinto Lake, which means we will put community development stalling, and the developers and the projects will not get completed on time, which means those projects will not come through fruition, and those three hotels. The cannabis would have to put on hold with any more licensing, because we don't have the police, the fire, we don't have the code enforcement, we don't have the nonprofit grants then to go through, we don't have a lot of stuff. So, these aren't things we're just adding to add. The voters approved those, so we do need to move forward with those in order to continue with the cannabis.
Well, I respectfully disagree with you, because I feel that just because we don't add one more police officer or one more fire department, that the cannabis industry's not going to come into Watsonville. I mean, that's just not true. I mean, it's coming no matter what. So, to stand here and tell me that, that we're, that these are, you know, these positions are for that, for that, you know, for cannabis, I just don't agree with that. I'm sorry. And yes, maybe some of them do, are, they can create their own revenue, but don't we already have somebody that runs Pinto Lake out there? I know, did we not fill her position?
We had a contract concession operation that was tied to an individual that passed away recently.
Okay.
And so, that operation ceased operation. It was with an individual, not with a company, and so we were faced with the decision of trying to go back out and hire another concession, concessionaire for the lake, which I understand was very difficult last time. We went out and essentially had one option.
Is this for that position?
This is for taking over operation of RV rentals, of boat launches, of facility rentals, of sports field rentals.
Can you explain how it worked before? Because this, I mean, this position definitely is needed, but it was already there, so was it not being paid from out of the city?
These positions, these positions for Pinto Lake did not exist prior, because it was completely contracted out.
But who paid those contracts?
Those contracts were paid out of revenues collected by the operation.
By the operation?
It was a net, the city. In other words, the city didn't have any expenses, it just got the revenue.
Okay, so now you're creating a position that's going to be full-time, that's basically taking over for that, the lady that was there before.
Right, we saw an opportunity to do a better job of running the operation, frankly, and increase access to the community, and so far, we've had this operation in place for about a month. The revenues have far exceeded any reports we've had over the last couple of years under that operation, and we're hopeful that under this new program, that these positions will be fully cost-recovered under the revenue we collect for the park.
Other questions? Garcia.
I asked the question if this budget had any, had a deficit, and I was told that no, there was no deficit. And so, I'm here wondering, the reason we don't have a deficit is why?
We are meeting our operational expenditures, covering those with our ongoing operational revenues on an ongoing basis for the current year, and so we don't have an operating deficit. We have carried over some capital projects that were not completed in the prior year, as well as using in the enterprise funds, for example, some of the fund balances for some of the capital projects, and so it may show as a shortfall for that individual year, but that's only because there's some capital expenses built into the project. Otherwise, on an operating basis, we are covering all of our expenditures, we don't have an operating deficit, and we're operating within budget.
Ms. Comas.
What kind of federal impact do you see, or have you factored into this with a lot of things that are going on that way that may no longer come to us for our budget or funding sources?
We're monitoring all of those closely, but right now, it's more crystal ball than definitive, and so we're not making specific changes at this point, but we're monitoring to see what impact there are. We do know, for example, CDBG funding has been threatened to be taken away from sanctuary cities, for example. We have some federal funding that comes in for, through our cops grants, that helps pay for a couple of our officers. We obviously don't want to see that money go away, but until we have more certainty around what the federal threats might result in, we're not making any changes at this time.
Pelisich.
How many bargaining groups do we have?
Eight.
And how many have we reached agreement with?
Five.
And when we have our position study, who are we starting with?
It'll be a comprehensive study, so it'll include all of the positions, all of our employees.
How do you determine, then, which get elevated first and all of that? How does that work?
That'll be part of the process, and cities go about it a number of different ways, looking at, you know, what percentage they are out of market, and so that, we've committed to working with all of our groups on the methodology, how we'll do that, how it might be implemented as part of the process. That'll also include looking at what cities are good comparables as part of that, because that's obviously what they're looking at when they look at the market comparisons. All of that, we would be doing in coordination with all of the labor groups.
And which other three that are still, you haven't settled with?
That includes Fire, OE3, and SEIU.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez.
I wanted to ask, to meet these two bargaining units halfway, what would it add to our budget?
Councilmember Hernandez, that's, we're getting specifically now into terms that are being negotiated at the table. I don't think it would be appropriate for me to...
It's not too specific, it's just a round number that we're looking at.
Well, the number, the number that I provided earlier, that looks at a three and three for the five-year projection, gives you an idea of what impact it would have over a five-year term, just as an example, if it was 3% in two years, which would be 6% over two years. That gives you an idea of what the impact would have on our budget over a five-year program, but outside of that, I don't have numbers handy to tell you what splitting the difference would look like.
Okay, Ms. Pelisich.
What does it cost to do the study to all groups? I mean, what if you just did them on certain groups, starting with?
You know, Councilmember Pelisich, I don't have that number offhand. We would likely bid that out, because there are a number of private consultants that do that work, but it could be, you know, in the range of $50,000 to do that study.
For the entire study, or?
For the entire study, and probably, probably more than that. We haven't bid that out, I don't have the number offhand.
But is it possible to do it over a period of time, so that you don't do it all at once?
There's lots of ways to go about it, and there's lots of ways that it could be phased, and that's, rather than us determine exactly how it'll happen, that's part of the reason why we've committed to putting together a labor management team with representatives from all the groups to work through the process and how it should happen.
Is that part of the negotiation process?
It is part of a meet-and-confer process, and it's part of what we've committed to throughout these negotiations, and so that is the current proposal on the table.
Does council have input into that?
Mayor Council, as part of that, when we release your RFP, we will provide the information to you. However, when those, the results come back, it's this council that will have to appropriate for those, and how you all want to appropriate for those.
The study, the study will not put in place automatic wage changes. It's, it'll be a document that we can use to help inform and guide that process as we go forward.
Question, what effects does it have by us approving our budget today with the negotiations going on?
So, we will be building in the five groups, for example, the MOUs that have been approved, those will be built in to the budget going forward, the same will be done for the other two, the other three groups eventually, when we come to agreement with those as well.
Thank you. Okay.
And the fact that if there's any changes to what we, as a council, have approved for that budget, will then come back to us for the revision, because we're, you're giving us a budget based on our figures that you've, that we have agreed on the allocation to each of the unions, so we'll have, there will be another revision if there were any other changes at that point.
Correct, and that approval typically comes to the council along with the approval of the MOU.
And given the fact that we have one council meeting in July, and then one at the end of August, what happens if this is going on and we're out of session?
Well, we've made it clear that it's our interest to try to move as quickly as the groups are willing to move, and so if that's possible by the next meeting in July, we will work, we will try our hardest to make that happen. If not, then it would have to wait until the end of August.
Mr. Dutra.
Well, don't we kind of know what the number is? Because of the Me Too clause, everyone's going to get the same, right? So, just put in the number that you gave the last five people, right? I mean, we kind of have an idea.
Well, it's not the same across all the groups, some of the public safety contracts look different.
Well, we've agreed with one public safety tonight, we have one left, but, I mean, we have a pretty good idea what everyone's going to look like, because there's always been, already been agreement by some of the organizations.
Mayor Council, that may be correct. However, OE3 and SEIU appear in a number of different funds, and council appropriates the budget by fund, so it's not in one, it's not like in the general fund or water, it's all over.
Well, I mean, they're going to be getting what everyone else is getting, right? So, you can put it in the funds they belong into, so. Anyways, my question is, what is the .5 office assistant? Is that an SEIU position, or what is that? Is that mid-management?
That's a part-time position, so I don't think that they're represented, are they represented by SEIU? The office assistant permanent, it's in SEIU.
It's, so this is going to be part-time?
It's part-time, no benefits.
Is this an opportunity we can give to one of our line workers that are currently here? I'd feel more comfortable voting yes on this if I know that one of them is going to be getting the position.
It's a, it's a part-time, no benefits, they're already working full-time.
Or line workers?
We have every line worker's working full-time.
And Mayor Council, it should be a competitive process. We cannot pre-select hiring from one specific group or an individual.
I'm just saying that we should, you know, give them consideration.
Inside, can't you?
I mean, don't we hire, aren't we, don't we, I mean, all kinds of businesses, you know, hire, rate, give, you know, inside their businesses, they get promotions, so that's, this doesn't make sense to me.
It's a personnel matter, and it's also the council bypassing the city manager and telling the staff who to, who to hire as part of the budget process, and that's not the way the council-manager form of government's supposed to work. You can express your policy desires and that sort of thing, but the council's not supposed to be approving a budget contingent upon a particular individual or a particular category of individual being hired or not hired.
Right, but when I, I've lately been expressing my desires on other issues that have not been heard, so I would, I mean, me putting my issue or my desire to have one of them brought up to another position will, I mean, may not be heard either. All I'm asking is to give them a fair shot as well, if one of them wants to apply for the job. That's all I'm asking.
But that could happen, I mean, people could apply, there's no problem.
Right, and I believe for that position, we hired off a list of folks that had applied for a position, and so we, Councilmember Dutra, we do often have recruitments that are internal, and there's opportunities for folks within the organization to apply for those jobs. That's important to us, we're providing opportunities for career growth and development, where folks have opportunities to move up and take on those positions, and then we also have positions where we recruit from the outside. You know, a good example of that is the Community Development Director position, the Administrative Services Director position, and so it depends on the role, but we do, we do, and will continue to have a focus on giving opportunities for our existing staff.
When I asked that question, I looked out, and I saw, heads nodded at me that there are halftime workers that are halftime in, as line workers, so I would hope that, I know this is, the city manager makes the decision on this, but I would hope he would keep it in consideration to our staff if they apply.
Mayor Council, I will throw this out there, and this is a fact, we do look at our internal staff for promotion and reallocation. We always do. The majority of the positions that come to us for approval are people moving from department to department. I have Rayvon telling me Steve stole another one of his employees. I mean, this is the way it works. We tend to promote from within or hire from within before we hire outside first.
If we're splitting hairs over a particular position, this one looks more of an entry if it doesn't have the benefits, or that you have another halftime somewhere else, so basically you're share-staffing somebody so that they have the full benefits under the SEIU. That's what this, the appearance of this looks like for creation.
Sorry, I don't, I don't fully understand your question, Council.
Okay, so this is a halftime employee, no benefits, but we have other halftime employees that if they were to share, like a job share, where they would be halftime in one department and halftime in this one, then they'd be a full FTE that would then get the benefits. Wouldn't that be correct?
Mayor Council, you are absolutely correct. However, I would say this, that prior to me, I know that people working in separate departments under separate individual directors doesn't always work out for the allocation of time, so that whole piece of the puzzle needs to work.
And, and again, if it is just a straight, one employee, halftime, no benefit, this is more of an entry level than what our union employees are currently doing, it would seem.
Correct, and just to clarify, this is an hourly position for this job, so it's a halftime, hourly, non-benefited position, and in my experience, I'll second City Manager Montoya's comments, I've seen those job shares try to work, and they're difficult to try to share time between departments and supervisors and try to do that equally and equitably across those two. I've not seen it work really well.
And even, Mayor Council, if I may, even to our director's position, and I'm not going to bring up the individual's name, but I even tried to hire internally for the Administrative Services Director position, and, but we couldn't do it internally. We wanted to do that first.
Well, and I can see this, if somebody's just on an hourly basis, they're probably going to be waiting for another job that actually does open, that offers the permanent, you know, full-time perhaps with the benefit structure anyway, so you may end up putting this on here to budget for something that's going to end up being temporary for anybody coming in that doesn't feel that, you know, they're going to be starting here to get their foot in the door and move on.
You know, Mayor Council, if I may, say one more thing. You know, everything that Mr. Huffaker and Ms. Manning has brought to me regarding the bargaining units, we don't disagree that they deserve to get paid fairly, and, you know, our thing is, furloughs went up for 10 years, and for eight to 10 years, for seven years, and for eight to 10 years, they were not getting paid what they were supposed to. We can't make it up in a year or two, we just simply can't, but part of what we've been trying to work out is, we know we have a positive future with three now hotels coming back in, we have these developments, but we can't bid out the revenue that we don't have in our pockets, or we don't know are going to happen right now. We got, we're just trying to be really careful about that. But as we see and we sit here, I know that we already have one hotel permit submitted, I know we'll have another one by the end of the month, or the end of July, I'm sorry, and I know the third hotel will come in in a few months, so we're getting there. It's just, it's a slow process.
Mr. Hernandez?
You know, we're told that we're being conservative with our, with our cannabis projections. What is that figure that we're looking at?
I believe that number, Councilmember Hernandez, is approximately $600,000 for this upcoming year.
And that's based off the six and nine, correct?
Mayor Council, if I may, correct that, okay? What, what council approved were six individual licenses.
Right.
And one that was already in the hopper, okay? So, and that was for a 5,000-square-foot canopy that would drive $100,000 a year. However, there are a number of them that are only doing 2,500 or 3,000, so it is not the 600,000. That amount will come in lower as they continue to submit their permanent allocations. We do not have that final amount as of yet.
And so, can we just increase these by one-fourth to get up to the 1.6 million in the near future?
We can make adjustments to revenue projections, but we, we would caution against that, because we're, again, trying not to count dollars that we don't have. And so, part of our focus with the groups, and part of the reason why we've been looking at two-year contracts, is to allow time for greater certainty of what the cannabis revenues will really generate, what hotels will really get completed, and so at that point in time, we could start looking at what the stabilized revenue income will be for those operations, and then make decisions before, rather than making decisions before those dollars are actually coming in the door.
But what I'm, what I'm saying is that if we can increase the number of businesses, you know, by one-fourth, so three more cultivation, four more manufacturing, that would up the number to 1.6.
Mr. Montoya?
Mayor Council, if I may, that is a policy decision that we'd have to come back to council in a future meeting, if that's what council wishes to try and do. However, I will go back in the past, we were sitting here at this year, at this time, where six individuals came before you and said, they're going to be up and running by January, February. They're not even close. I mean, they are getting closer, but it's taken a lot longer. The manufacturers do the same thing, so even if you up the number, it's going to take them a year and a half to get operating. So, that's the... So that's the problem we're trying to deal with right now. We're trying to make sure we get these things up and going and not bet on revenue we don't have.
Right, and I know it'll take a while, but still, if we do it, you know, soon, we can address the issue we have with trying to increase the pay for our lowest-paid workers that we have.
Comments?
I guess it sort of looks like there's something coming out here. Again, the two-year, we're talking about giving raises, which is part of what we've got set aside for, you know, we've carved it out of our budget in order to do so and to be able to place that across the board for people to get started with while we have this chance for the rebuild and diversification. I, we have, you know, some things going on with Monterey Bay Community Power that could potentially be a revenue generating, which won't occur until next year. And that'll still take us probably by, by year two to maybe even see something come off of that. And at that point, we can start getting some better projections of what cannabis is doing, diversification of other revenue streams that could be created and that could become profitable for the general fund so that it could be used to offset what's going on with the CalPERS as well as the, the rediscovery of a lot of these jobs for their, their salary wages that are comparable to what their earnings should be. So I, I would think it's reasonable to, to say, let's work with what we've got now and we're not, prioritize what we need to prioritize with the positions that we know are at the, the lower end of the scale with unions that we've got here. I mean, we, we know that we need to do that. I, we're on a bare-bones structure. I, I don't see anywhere else in this budget that you've come up with recommendations for us to, to shift so that we can actually offset to go ahead and give any more money out for the salary wages that we have to work with. I mean, is, are we missing something? Are we missing anything that can be cut, trimmed, reduced, deferred? I mean, anywhere?
Mayor Council, I'll let Matt finish up after this. There's nothing we could defer on capital because we have no money for capital. So that's out the window. As far as some of the revenues that went on the ballot, last year, the Measure M's are strictly put in certain categories by the voters. So those are done. The utility users tax, we increased it from 10% to 11%. And actually, you may see a recommendation from staff to go to 12%, like the majority of the county of Santa Cruz and Monterey will do. But that has to happen next year. We can't put any revenue items on the ballot this year. So we are looking to the future. We are looking to try and diversify more, but there is very little flexibility in this budget. And we are dealing with one-time revenues. We are, you know, we're trying to cobble a few things together. The, the trees on Main Street and the trees popping up, we didn't pay for those. PG&E paid for those. You know, a lot of this one-time revenue stuff, we're cobbling together from other groups and having them donate or pay for stuff for us. And so we are doing what we can, and we will continue to do it.
Creatively.
Yeah, I would just add to that, that again, our, our capital program is zero. We've reached our cap on local district sales tax at 2%. There's no more room there to increase. We have the highest tax rate in the county. And we've looked at other things like TOT and UUT increases. Other options are using our general fund cash balance. Not a good practice. It's one-time revenues. Once you use it up, it's gone. It's not coming back. And so you're right, it's something we should be concerned about. It's something we expect to spend a lot of time working with the council on over the next year as we look at the five-year forecast, as we look at your strategic plan, what your policy goals are, what your priorities are for the community. And we expect to have a lot more conversations about this.
Okay, Mr. Hertz?
You know, Mayor, I'm pretty quiet on the budget tonight because I think we've combed through it over and over and over. And whatever hot air I could add to it, it's probably not going to make it much better. But I do want to say that I have a lot of empathy for the employees because I was a, a union member in my entire working career as a auto worker, as a construction worker, and 32 years as a, as a unionized teacher. And so I can sympathize and empathize and put myself in the line worker's shoes quite easily. But that doesn't help us with the budget, unfortunately. And so, you know, I think we, we have an obligation to, to move on with the budget here this evening, and negotiations will continue at whatever pace they do continue. And, and, you know, we can tinker around with the hiring and tinker around with our expenditures, but the fact is, we're in an unequal position with other municipalities. We're just, you know, we don't have the revenue that other municipalities can generate, and we're, we're at a disadvantage in that regard. And I remember, you know, this is not the first budget that I'm not totally in love with or happy with, but it's a lot better than the budgets that we were facing back in, in the 90s in some cases and certainly in the 2011s when I came back on the council. And so this is, we don't want to go back to those tough times. Those were very, very difficult, and employees sacrificed a lot. And it's really, you know, hard to make up any kind of gains on that. And so I would propose that we approve the budget and all the attachments along with it, and I would move that and that we continue to focus on what we can do in this community to raise revenues, to shop locally, to improve our properties, to support public education and encourage tourism. And whatever we can do to stay out of court, that's, that might save us some money, too. So I don't know if the council's ready for it or not, but I would move that we approve the budget.
Okay, motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, discussion? I think, okay, go ahead.
This is difficult regardless, and we all know that. We have $144 million on how to, how to fit everything we need to in that, that pie. That's what we've got to work with here. And it includes staff. It includes making sure you have a roof over your head with what you need to do for your staff and your resources for all of the consumers within this community. And it's going to take all of us coming together on this and to be able to move forward with this and be very proactive in that process. And the ball doesn't need to get dropped in the process either. That's something that we want to really make sure. And I think we've got a very responsive council that is going to ensure that the ball doesn't get dropped when it comes to evaluating the positions and making sure that we get what we need to on the, what's a fair market rate for them and to having this discussion in the future about where is the money going to come from in order for us to bring up to speed a lot of the positions that need to still be evaluated. In the course of evaluation, it's gone across the board. It's gone across all of the unions when it's come to be evaluated and reevaluated through human resources. So there's been no discrimination of like one group or one union that this is occurring to that is being reset for wages and job descriptions and responsibilities and, and income. We're, we're looking at this across the board, and we, we understand that the unions that are still left to be negotiated are the toughest ones as a result of the cost of living and the consequences. But we're looking at giving the money. I mean, that's definitely put in this budget, which is what we want to look forward to do, and not drop it from that point, but continue the conversation early enough that we can find some revenue resources and be creative on where these are going to come from to help with those wages for the retention of salaries and, and staff. We know that you're loyal to be here because the, probably city employees are the highest average length of time on the job as probably any other careers or businesses in this area. You've got a retirement, you've got health insurance. We understand the wages need to be a bit more competitive. I'm self-employed, I don't get any of that. I'm on my own. And it's a struggle for me to see how difficult it is we're negotiating contracts for unions. And, I mean, I, I'd be grateful to have all of the other things that go along with it, too, but I'm not going to stop there. I'm going to make sure that we continue this conversation. It's not the last of it.
Okay, other discussion, Mr. Hernandez?
I still had a question. Is, is the, the pay study, is that being negotiated in the contract? Is that something that?
Correct.
So it doesn't necessarily have to be the way it was described, that it would go citywide? Could it be just the bargain units?
That's correct.
Other discussion? Yes, Mr. Dutra?
Just a quick comment. I, I just, I'm, I'm hesitant about this. I know we have to pass a budget this evening. The fact that this position that I have, that, that is part-time kind of makes me feel a little bit, I don't know if comfortable is even the word, of passing this, but I do hope that in the future, that our staff, when we're, when we're in a position that we are in now with not giving raises or haven't given raises to our, to our staff in quite a long time, that we're more cautious on our spending. I was not aware of the, the rebranding of the logo and the cost of it until after it was already done. And so, and I just found out about the furniture. I don't know if that was your money or that, or the city's money, but these are things that I'm just finding out this evening. I would hope we were more cautious with our spending because it does not look good in the eyes of our line workers when they've been going without for a very long time, before a lot of us were even here, before I was even here.
Other discussion? I want to, go ahead. I want to say that first, we should not contradict union and non-union, okay? Because the workers here have organized for a long time, and it is good. It is good. It's only, it's one of the only ways that workers have a, a leverage to negotiate. So definitely, I support unions, and I think most of us here support unions. And what we're dealing with right now, again, you know, I'm, just came back again. I have negotiated budgets in the past with Mr. Hertz and some with Mr. Hernandez in the past. And I think it was also with Ms. Belisich. We did some budgets. And it's always, it's always a, a tough thing to do because in the years when I left, it was part of the, when you took the furlough. And we went to the crisis of 2008 and 2009. It's always been very hard for the city, especially here, to bring our revenues up. And it still continues to be. You know, we're one of the lowest per capita in the whole county. But again, you know, how do we, how do we support our workforce? And I think that's where we have to look, that there are sometimes these things that they look not quite right. You buy furniture, you know, you put the palms, you move disposition. I think that what is important is that we have more transparency on what things that we do. And I really want to encourage our staff, our management, to also have that kind of relationship with all of our staffs for our management to know our, our staff, to have conversations with you, to be in your departments, for you to see our staff, our personnel, our director, our GM, to go, you know, and meet with you so that you also can let him know and let her know what are the issues that we are confronting. I think tonight, we're facing this issue of this Me Too. And in some issue, I mean, I, I tell you, some, in some, in some situations, I think the Me Too is good. Because I, I've been into, take for example, the hotels in San Francisco. A lot of the hotels in San Francisco, some of the small ones, they're waiting for what the big ones are going to do. And once the big ones negotiate, then the small ones say, okay, Me Too, because they don't want to go through the whole hassle. And I think that we have to find, how do we balance this issue of the Me Too situation, understanding that we have units that has been so behind? And it's not fair to continue to be behind. But I think that, and what I'm hearing today is that we're making a commitment and you should hold us, that it's not just in words, but in actions, that is, as we improve our economy, that we have to improve your situation and your wages. But I see us here today, you know, not trying, not trying to counterpose each other, but at the same time, what is the, what is the, the gains of management, let's just say, in trying so hard to fight not to give you any, any equity? And I don't see it like that. I think that their job is to tell us, okay? To tell us where we're going, what's going to happen to us. And we have to be very conscious of the overall so that we don't fall as we continue to go forward. So it is a question of balance. It is a question of trying to be fair, too. But I also want to caution us from also pitting our, our workers together against each other, that you're making more than us. I think that we understand that we have to bring it up. It's been too long, and it hasn't happened. Ms. Belisich?
I just wanted to say that I'm glad that people spoke up tonight and that we heard from you. As you know, we have to pass a budget tonight. But I think you heard from the council there that we are very supportive of all of our workers. And I hope you understand that we do have to pass a budget, but we do care about you also.
Other comments?
Let's make sure that we've got this on the agenda regarding moving as quickly as we possibly can for this evaluation. And, you know, again, we, we do listen to what you've told us in comments. We are, the door has been opened for me in terms of reaching out to me, as well as the other council members, to have this conversation. It's not going out ignored. We are looking at giving something instead of the freeze. We are back from furlough. We have to cautiously go forward with what we do have for the money that is available overall and help us with creative solutions. You, you know the budgets from the departments that each of you work? Maybe there's suggestions that you can provide management and finance that can help us with this solution as well. I don't know what I don't know because I'm not in your position to know what you're doing and how things are being spent and how things are being allocated. So help us. Help, help with the, you know, the, the suggestions on where we can go with this and where we can be creative to get money and move it over for a salary situation. Because that's going to help us in the long run, is keeping the doors open for communication, making sure that we are moving with stride on the evaluations that we need to do. Again, diversifying what we're doing for other opportunities because I would say that every, every week, we're coming up of suggestions ourselves for the staff to look at or to consider. And that's so that we can take care of our staff that we have here on salaries and making Watsville more progressive. So please know that I'm very supportive of the staff that we have here and very grateful for everybody of what the work they've done. And it's all been, we're, we're not ignoring anything of the concerns that we've heard here from our audience and our, and our employees. And we will be very proactive in making sure that we hear back from staff on moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion? Mr. Hernandez?
You know, I think folks have been very eloquent and, I think, very diplomatic. But I, you know, I still believe that as a city, that we do have to have the foresight that we're going to be in this situation when it comes to negotiations. And we need to have, we need to be ready for that. There's always going to be issues that come up, you know, whether it's we need more, more public safety, or we need vehicles, or we need to fix buildings, whatever it may be. It's always going to come up, but we need to have the foresight that we're going to have to create a budget for this. I know that we're not giving comment as to negotiations or anything like that, but, you know, I think that it'd be imperative for all the council that we get the, the market rate, the pay study done for these two units.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call?
Belisich?
Yes.
Carmen Gomez?
Yes.
Dutra?
Pleasantly, yes.
Garcia?
No, an uncodified ordinance number 19, increasing council members' compensation by 5% and yes to the rest.
Hernandez?
Yes.
First?
Yes. Yes, and that raise for us is $25, okay? I just wanted to make that clear. That's $25 that we're getting raised.
Thanks for that clarification.
5% sounds like a lot, but $25.
I know, that's why I wanted to clarify 5% is $25, okay, for, for us. Thank you so much. Yes. Okay, that passes. Thank you very much. And I want to thank you for staying with us tonight. I'm glad that you made it here, and I invite you, please, come again. Don't just wait for the budget, okay? Keep telling us what's going on at your workplace. Come and give us suggestions. Come and give us input, please. Thank you very much. Okay, moving along, it's been recommended that item, new business.
Okay, moving along, it's been recommended that item, new business, item eight, be considered. See if we can stay until midnight here.
Right.
And break the record on one time we weren't until 1 o'clock. It will be brought next time, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. I think that we're already getting to the point. But let's request, there's requests for future agenda items.
Right here.
Okay, Mr. Dutra?
Thank you. I would like to put on the agenda that we deal with Ana Caballero's office. So, the next agenda, I would like to have an item on there deciding where she's going to go. I want to think, I know she has a staff member here today. Thank you for being here. And, but I think that this is definitely, the council needs to take this up. And we need to decide where our assembly member's going to go. So, we need to, if we could put her on the agenda.
Okay. Other items? Ms. Belisich?
I've had someone talk about shopping carts, a lot of excessive shopping carts in the neighborhood and people going through garbage. I don't know what we can do about it. I don't know how we address it. But I know that there are abandoned shopping carts. And I know we, we put it in the newsletter to call this number, but yet you just see them. They're everywhere. I don't know what the answer is, but I think we need to think about it or come up with some solutions. And I hear people talk about, you know, I have my garbage can out and I hear this noise outside and it's people going through garbage and they, you know, are they supposed to? What are the rules? I mean, I, I don't know. People, people are concerned about that. And, and also, they have those, the carts in the, that come from Salinas, you know, that are going more and more frequently in neighborhoods. Do they, are they licensed? Are they paying taxes? Are they, how, how are they monitored?
Vendors? Cars or vendors?
Those, yeah, with the bicycles, you know, those guys.
Okay, the vendors, yes.
Yeah. So, if we could just talk about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Garcia?
At our last meeting, I asked for an update for our climate action plan. And just wondering again when that might happen.
Okay.
Mayor, Council?
Want to answer that one?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, Ms. Garcia. We're, we're working on it. We're going, we're trying to get, get together the information. So, hopefully, we'll get it soon.
Okay.
Soon as possible.
Ms. Gomez?
I know that we've postponed this article or the, the next item for our next council member. But I do want to bring up a point that I personally have witnessed every single day for this past month, either going to work or coming home, people going through red lights, Freedom Boulevard Airport. And I really want to see what we can do about checking that out for our officers for citations. It's a very dangerous, with the intersections. We already have enough accidents going on. And I know that the study, again, for this next go of it, we'll probably have more discussions on this. But please, whatever we need to do to get that Loma Prieta and Airport is very dangerous. I, Green Valley and, and Freedom Boulevard. Let's see what we can do about getting some of that traffic stopped that's going through the lights. And hopefully, we'll get a little bit more patrols in there for people to realize they, they should, they need to comply with what the laws are for the, our road.
And that's why we were going to talk about this neighborhood traffic-
Yes.
-plan, unless you want to rethink about it.
Oh, no. Let's, I, I have people that want to come-
We can discuss it more. But I think we do have, we have, they're, they're devils and law, lawbreakers. So, we need to catch them. Okay, Mr. Hernandez?
I was checking to see if we can, I know I always comes up at meetings about the fear of the sanctuary cities and what the 45th is going to do. So, I think that we should probably join the 16 cities in their, they're not entering, we can't be part of their lawsuit, but we can sign a letter of support, like it's a, I forgot what it's called. But anyways, joining them to protect ourselves from the sanctuary cities.
Okay. So, you have a list of items, request, okay? And we, you have one?
Oh, while we're complaining about all our pet peeves, let's make sure that loud cars get included in the traffic plan.
Okay, loud cars. Loud cars meaning mufflers or music?
Uh, mufflers, the highly tuned trumpet sounding mufflers that you love so much.
Okay. Well, with all of that, we'd like to thank you. We are looking forward to see all of us and you at the Fourth of July parade. Oh, you have another request, Mr. Hernandez?
I do. Pet peeves.
Hey, the mind is working now more.
So, I see every corner, these guys with the little tents and they're selling cellphones? What's up with that? Is that, they don't have a business license?
They do not. And we have, as part of our proactive code enforcement, been citing many of those. They, there's a few different operators. They tend to pop up in different areas of town. But we have been as proactive as we can trying to cut that down.
I see them every day in front of Grand Otto and Long's.
Right. And there, some are repeat offenders. And many of those have been cited with monetary fines. And we will continue to do that.
I guess that maybe the company is paying their fines, so they continue to come around. Thank you so much. See you Fourth of July.